Like to call the Duvall, we need the whole workshop to order for four fifteen twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. Uh, is there anything for the good of the word this evening? First. Uh, well, Mary did review the regular meeting agenda.
We have that as you administer.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I do want to note for the regular meeting agenda, we did have a lot of last minute walk on. We try to do it very rarely, um, but there is at the bottom of the agenda, you see Agenda Bill twenty five and eighteen P O R for parks. Um, it is on the uh, on the website already. So if you're pulling it up, we've already put the Agenda Bill on there um, for council to review while the meeting isn't in progress. But did want to know this last minute walk on.
Thank you. Anything else?
Definitely.
Uh, we refer books, yeah. Uh, and that moves us to the first discussion of this evening, which is the swearing in of Officer Andrew Clark from Chief Brown Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, all employees of the City of Duvall and members of the Duvall Police Department. Uh, tonight I'm going to introduce our newest officer. Uh, he started actually on the first of the month. And this is his moment to be sworn in as an officer to the City of Duvall. Andrew John Clark joins the Duvall Police Department after growing up in Waukesha, Wisconsin. His parents live in Egg Harbor. I just wanted to say that. Wisconsin. Andrew attended the University of Wisconsin Madison and Madison, Wisconsin from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen. Um, and while attending college, he worked as ticket sales office for the University of Wisconsin Madison uh, from September two thousand and fifteen through May two thousand and sixteen. He also worked as an undergraduate assistant for the University of Wisconsin Madison from January two thousand and seventeen to August of two thousand and seventeen. Here in a mattress during Forest Science in January two thousand and seventeen, and after graduating in college, um, Andrew worked as a plant health care technician for Davy Tree Expert Company in Lake Close Park. In April of two thousand and twenty one, he went to work for Dina Park Incorporated in Bellevue, Washington as a business development director. And he left his job in May in two thousand and twenty four when he was fired by a deputy executive sheriff to the King County Sheriff's Hall. Clark lives with his wife of two and a half years, Claire. And they lived, they were home, they owned since October of two thousand and twenty three in the city of Duvall. His wife, uh, his wife is employed as a teacher in the Dino Washington. So, Mr. Clark, who's in for?
Thanks.
Please. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew John Clark.
I, Andrew John Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
They will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the city of Duvall.
For the city of Duvall.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Duvall Police Department's mission, the mis- vision, mission, or values in the Police Officers' Code of Ethic.
Department's, uh, vision of values.
Vision.
Mission.
Core values.
Core values.
And the Police Officers' Code of Ethics.
Police Officers' Code of Ethics.
Uphold the Constitution.
Uphold the Constitution.
And the law of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the City of Duvall.
And the ordinances of the City of Duvall.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thinking as much will be Lieutenant Saberin of the Duvall Police Department.
Appreciate it. Well, um, as a resident of the city, I'm super happy to be here with this department. From the time that my wife and I moved to the city, we've had a great time being a part of the culture. Uh, the residents of the city are fantastic. Uh, I think the values of this department match its residents about being community oriented, positive, um, and just trying to build a better. So, um, I'm really looking forward to hopefully fulfilling that mission, uh, pending I get through training and everything going. But I appreciate all of your time, um, and I feel very welcome. So thank you.
Good afternoon. One thing I forgot to mention about congratulating space, mentioned about, um, Andrew Clark is there's an award that's given at the Religious Training Commission that is chosen from their classmates or total classmates. And, uh, opt lines, uh, it is not a popular contest, but it is actually based on performance, teamwork, and it's the person that you would want to have on any type of call with you. And that's a control partner award to Mr. Clark one now for his class. So. Yeah, you got it.
The second item on the discussion items that evening is an update on the legislative session with Katie Woodier of Washington, VP of Washington and Barrett, TFM Associates and Brian Henslow, our principal, our this, our beautist consulting, our lobbyist. Like they're both online already, so welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us join by Zoom. It is busy time here. There's twelve days left left of session and sounds like they're still debating. I have the TV on upstairs, so it sounds like things are going long again. Last night, the House adjourned around two A M. I guess this morning around two fifteen, so that's how things are going around here. That's because tomorrow is the final cutoff of session. That means that all policy only bills, bills that aren't necessary to implement the budget have to have passed both the House and the Senate through the committee process, through the floor process, um, or else they will die tomorrow. So there's a lot of work left to be done tonight and tomorrow. But here we find ourselves, um, on the cusp of the final cutoff, uh, which means we're ninety three days in. Wow. Out of a hundred and five day session, signing die is twelve days away. And there was some talk last week and the week before, and maybe a couple of weeks before that about whether we would have special sessions to look forward to, to get to a budget deal. But this week, it actually seems like it's coming together. Knock on all the pieces of wood that you can, but it seems like things are coming together. Um, there are new, um, revenue bills that are showing up on new committee, um, schedules that have just popped up in the last twenty four hours, forty eight hours. So, um, expect some big news coming out of the legislature. Certainly tomorrow, we do expect to have some news, um, tomorrow. Um, Ways and Means Committee will begin talking, hearing about these new, these new revenue ideas, um, tomorrow. And, uh, there may be press conference. I hear it maybe and maybe not, but I'm not sure. Brian might know more. But we're in the thick of things right now. Um, looking through many of the different items that we've been tracking related to your priorities and the A W C overall priorities, we'll just go through, um, a handful, probably two handfuls of bills that you might be interested in. Talk about where they're at in the process, um, if they have passed or if they're on the cusp of being about to pass, as well as a couple that, um, didn't survive, that are interesting to think about, that might come back next year. Um, in some cases, we're pretty glad they didn't survive, so we need to be ready for next year. So, um, lots going on. Nineteen hundred, about nineteen hundred bills were introduced this session. That is a lot. There's still a tremendous amount in play, so it's been a very, very productive and busy session. As we dive into bills, any other, um, context setting comments, Brian, that you'd like to make?
No, that's a great job. Do you want me to just jump in on, on the bill list as we? Okay, great. Um, one of the things, you know, that this session, there was, um, certainly from the, um, the newly elected Governor Ferguson, as well as some others, a, a desire to make investments in law enforcement, um, either through grant programs or local tools, um, that promise really hasn't materialized in a way that I think that we would have loved to have seen. There is House Bill twenty fifteen that is in the Senate. It is, um, awaiting action in the Senate. Um, it is, um, it does have budget implications, so it's quite possible that it's not going to go, um, by five o'clock tomorrow. And, um, that shouldn't be too much of a concern. As it stands now, it, um, it has, um, some amount of money, uh, available for grants to, uh, local entities. And then it has a one percent council manic option that can be taken first by the county and then by, uh, respective cities if a county does not act in a certain amount of time. Um, when you look into the details, there's a lot of requirements, um, and it would be, I think, interesting at some point to compare kind of some of the training, uh, requirements and, and, um, levels that you all meet, um, in order to be eligible for either a grant or to take action on the one percent. So, um, it's never easy. Um, the next bill that I want to talk about quickly is, um, House Bill twelve thirteen. This, um, pertains to you as an employer. Um, it has, um, some new, um, uh, eligibility criteria for, um, paid family medical leave. Um, it allows an individual to be eligible now after, um, a hundred and eighty days of employment. Um, and then some of the other key provisions of the bill don't directly, um, pertain to you as a city, as employer, but to some of your small businesses it now. Um, uh, I believe current or current law, it, um, it only applies if you employ fifty or more. And it now, um, brings that level down to twenty five or, or more beginning, um, at the time that the bill is enacted. And then by the time we get out to like twenty eighteen, it brings it down to like eight. Um, so, um, and then I think I'm going to kick it back to you. We're going to go back and forth a little bit if that's okay with you on some of our issues here.
Got to divide and conquer because there's a lot to talk about. Um, another bill we've been tracking is fifty two eighty four. That's the recycling bill, also known as E P R. It originated in the Senate and it is the reason why the House was up so late last night. This was what they, uh, they spent many, many hours debating. What that does is hopefully it will make recycling rates higher and make it easier for cities to manage their recycling programs. So that's why it's, it's good for, good for you all. Um, it requires the people who create packaging to participate in and fund a producer responsibility organization so that hopefully we get better packaging options, making recycling a lot more of a smooth process. Um, it's based on a Minnesota law that incorporates some of the lessons that other states have learned as they have implemented E P R laws. And, um, we expect, we expect to hear a lot of good things about this bill. Um, it has to be ironed out now between the House and the Senate versions. So that's called a conference and we expect that to, to go relatively quickly. And then, um, we'll see what the final package ends up looking like. Um, kicking it back to Brian.
Um, the, the next bill we wanted to highlight was Senate Bill, um, fifty one forty eight. And that, if I scroll through my notes, where is that? That has passed the House, so that will likely need a concurrence vote. Um, so it's past Senate and the House. It hasn't passed in exactly the same form. So then it has to go back to the Senate for the Senate to say, okay, we're okay with what the House did. Or they say, no, we don't like what the House did. Go back to our version and they, they usually sort it out. Most likely, more likely than not, they just agree with the most recent changes. Um, uh, so that bill started out as something that, um, many, um, cities expressed concerns with. It would have kind of required like a, um, a, uh, like mandatory process for Commerce to approve, um, various elements of your comp plan. I know you just went through that process. It's very rigorous. Um, I think the key piece here is the, um, the housing element that was added, um, from House Bill twelve twenty, a couple of years ago. Um, and as the bill moved through the legislature, it kind of got, um, uh, worked out to where it is now. Like you can, you can, um, voluntarily submit your, um, various elements of your comp plan um, to, uh, Commerce for review. And then also Commerce has given some dollars to do some audits based on various factors, um, to, um, go out and just kind of check some of the work of various, uh, various cities. And, um, so maybe not everyone's favorite bill, but, um, landed in, I think, a much better spot than it started. Um, the next one I am, I can report just, uh, just passed, uh, gosh, less than a half an hour ago, I think. That's House Bill seventeen ninety one. Um, that pertains to, um, REIT one and REIT two. Um, I think the way I would describe it is it does not, um, so, um, it, um, harmonizes the allowable uses from REIT one and REIT two. And then it also, um, there had been a temporary allowance for, um, for local government. I think it's to use thirty five percent for like, um, yes, for operations and maintenance. And it, and that was set to expire in, by January of the end of this year, so January twenty six. Um, it makes that permanent, that allowable use permanent. So it doesn't, it's not a, a, um, it's arguably, it's not a new REIT or new REIT authorization, but it does make that flexibility permanent and it does then harmonize the allowable uses for both of the existing REITS. Um, that did, um, pass the Senate floor, um, just moments ago.
Another bill you've probably heard about from past attempts to get it across the finish line, um, House Bill ten ninety six. This is a lot splitting bill, um, so it was sponsored by Andrew Barkus this year. It ended up being, um, pretty popular bipartisan bill. Only, um, only about four folks, um, voted no when it passed yesterday. So it increases the housing supply through administrative lot splitting rather than the current land of subdivision process. And it's, um, attempt to make that administratively a lot easier for cities to be able to do. Um, and it doesn't prescribe parking easements, furniture, lot sizes, or other things that bogged down the bill, bill in the past. So, um, it looks like it is in a good place. It will also have to go through a concurrence process um, as it makes its way into its, um, its final form. Let me get back to my list of bills here. So fifty six, or sorry, fifty five seventy six Senate bill is a tax on short term rentals that might be of interest, um, to you. So it allows cities and counties to impose a short term rental tax of up to four percent. Requires that the revenues from that short term rental tax be used for housing related services and facilities. So the idea here is to, um, drive up housing supply, make it easier, um, to fund some affordable housing options by taxing short term rentals. So, so your, your, your vacation rental types. Um, it has a couple of amendments, so, um, exempting some of the more formalized vacation home developments. I don't think that applies to Duvall, um, but it is currently stuck in rules, the bill. So each bill, um, between the committee vote that it survives before it goes to the House, uh, floor, Senate floor, that goes through a thing called rules, and that's where there can be a little traffic jam while legislators figure out in what order to consider bills and whether or not it has enough support as a whole to deserve a floor vote. So currently this one is stuck in roles. Now, because it is, um, a tax and it could be related to a final, um, a final budget for the, for the state, I don't think it's going to die if it doesn't make it out of rules tomorrow. Um, but it is interesting to see that it is currently stuck there for now. So other bills of note, um, you've probably seen headlines around the rent cap bill. That's House Bill twelve seventeen this year. If you remember from last year, um, the rental cap bill was probably the biggest controversial bill. At least I saw the most headlines about it last year. Um, it did not survive the Senate last year. This year it did. Um, it did survive in quite a different form coming out of the Senate than the House sent it over. The rent cap was initially set at seven percent. It's been lifted to ten percent through the floor amendments that the Senate added. It also exempts single family home rentals as long as they aren't owned by a large company that might own many different single family homes um, or a rental company that, um, that runs a lot of these. So there will need to be again a concurrence process to iron out the final version. And these are some pretty substantial changes, so I would imagine that conversation is actually going to be a little bit stickier than, than many of the other, um, uh, concurrent conversations that will happen. Um, so I would say this is still a little bit far from being a baked bill. I think there's still a risk that it, it doesn't survive. Um, another one you may have heard about, actually, if you, if you were in Olympia with us in February, you, you would influence this one in a big way. Fifty one eighty four on parking. Uh, while, while you all were here visiting for A W C days, we sent, um, we sent some information to Senator Dingra. And she was able to support a floor amendment, uh, to lift the, or to add an exemption for cities under, um, twenty thousand dollars or twenty thousand people so that you didn't have to have that, the, um, the, the regulations around minimum parking requirements. So that bill has continued on. It did pass. Um, it has, I think it's up to thirty thousand, uh, is the population threshold, and there were several other changes. Still doesn't, um, apply to you, but I wanted to let you know it's still there. So good job getting that amendment so that you're in a good place coming out of this session. Back over to you, Brian.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, uh, I, as, as late as last week, I would have told you that that bill had problems, still wasn't going to pass. Um, so to Katie's point, it was, um, very, um, important to get that carve out, um, because otherwise, um, it was, um, apparently, it, it, it was a priority of leadership apparently to get that bill done. And, um, it was, uh, even though there was still quite a bit of, um, concern being voiced on that. Um, I am, uh, um, we're continuing to make kind of incremental progress on condominium, condominium liability. I don't know, show of hands, tell me, we've got lawyers around this table. We got realtors, we got real estate agencies. Anyhow, without, um, without going into too much detail, and also because, uh, um, we had, we're having some serious technology difficulties here at, um, at, you know, at the campus west here right now where my, uh, printer wasn't working, so I couldn't print out my notes. And then my iPad with my notes on it just ran out of juice. This is what the end of session looks like, people. It is not pretty. But, um, in the, so, so we're continuing to kind of like try to make, um, like condom, the, the condo pathway have like the same price tag as like the rental pathway, right? Because we want, um, we want housing supply that is not just, um, available to renters, but also to create opportunities for first time homeowners. And one of the biggest impediments is, at least we hear from the building community, is the cost of what is required uh, on condominiums is an implied warranty that has lots of protections for, um, the owners. And the long and short of it, and I think the policy is, is fair, is that, um, it's, it's pretty sophisticated to understand just kind of like the building envelope and all the things that go into like owning kind of a shared building. So there's, there ought to be some sort of warranty, but we're kind of nibbling around the edges of what, what makes sense or not. This most recent iteration, which has passed, um, both chambers and does need a concurrence as well. It, 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 it now, it continues to exempt more, um, um, units from the implied warranty requirement. So, so a couple of years ago, I don't know how many of you were trying this recall, but it, there was like, um, up to like six units or four units. It's now twelve units or fewer, um, as long it is, is, it is no more than two stories. So if you've got like six stacked by two, you're good. If you've got two stacked by six, you would still need to have the implied warranty. So, um, twelve or fewer, um, as long as it's no more than, um, two stories is now exempt from the implied warranty. And hopefully that will help create, um, some opportunity for an ownership pa-, um, for ownership pathways on, on more units. Um, the next piece of legislation I have is, um, uh, fifty forty one. And again, we're in the, kind of like what's kind of mostly settled. That was the legislation around, um, whether or not it is appropriate to provide unemployment benefits to individuals that were striking. And, um, um, for those of you that have visited and were down there, um, you've got some insight. It's great. So I was doing my notes at like twelve thirty and I was trying to pull up this bill and, um, it had just went off the, uh, the Senate, the House floor, excuse me. And so there wasn't like an updated bill report and there was no fewer than like twenty one amendments. And I was like, how am I going to get this done? How am I going to figure out what was, what am I going to tell these folks at five thirty tonight? And I looked to my right and I was sitting right next to like the labor lobbyists. And so, so I've got a fresh labor, uh, perspective on this bill, but maybe not the employer perspective quite so much. But I think the, the long and short of it is, um, uh, it, it, it does provide, um, moving forward that individuals that, um, um, strike and strikes that last longer than a couple of weeks are eligible for, um, U I benefits. So, um, it, it theoretically should not, um, affect public in, um, sector employees who do not have a legal right to strike. That is written specifically, um, in the language of the bill that if you do not have a right to strike, you do not have a right to U I benefits. Um, I think the question that comes up most is what about teachers? Um, and again, um, your superintendents might have a slightly different perspective on this, but, um, from my, uh, um, understanding is that, um, since teachers are paid yearly anyhow and teachers make up the school days when there's teacher strikes that, um, this wouldn't, um, explicitly apply either. So that's my understanding of the bill is it passed the House and so happy to turn it back over to Katie.
And likely that one's headed for concurrence too, right? Because it's pretty substantially different than it was, and I would say it's far from a baked deal either. So it'll be interesting to see how it, um, how it shakes out. So I'll run through real quick just some of the bills that might come back next year that did not survive. And, um, whether or not we're dancing on their graves or crying, I'll leave that up to you all. So Brian, I'm just going to skip through this list real quick and then if there's questions, I'll, I might defer more to you. So you may have heard about, um, in addition to the CIPA checklist, um, for environmental justice, there were concerns with that bill around how much extra process, how much extra, um, time, money, et cetera. How much more difficult it would be to get through a CIPA process if these standards were added. Um, it sounds like the bill's going to be reworked. It didn't make it past the first, I guess, the third cutoff. The first, um, House of Origin cutoff in March. Um, so, um, yeah, there's, there's definitely work to be done on that one. Another one you may have heard about particularly through A W C was bargaining the impacts of A I. Pretty broad bill, and that's probably what made it, made it die. It was just overly broad and by the time that, um, state folks were briefing the budget committee on how many staff they would need just to figure out case by case if something had A I or didn't and how that would impact an employer. It was like seven positions and it was a huge fiscal note. And you know, from our presentation in January, um, the budget is tough. And we'll get more into budget details here in the second half of our presentation. So anything with a big price tag was pretty well dead. So that one's gone. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in getting a handle on A I in the workplace. So I imagine we'll see versions of it in the future, but for now it is dead. Another one, um, probably not too related to the work you do, except with, um, sewer. Um, Environmental Crimes was a bill that was written to essentially embody what the EPA has for criminal prosecution of environmentally related crimes, so like water and, and air quality, um, um, uh, things, acts that people would commit. It was trying to embody that in state statute two to allow the AG's office to, um, to go after bad actors. It was written very vaguely to the point that industry, um, anybody operating on a permit, um, through ecology, everybody was pretty concerned. So that, um, that is a likely bill to come back next year, but for now, knock on wood, it seems to be dead as well. And another one I had flagged, um, there was what in two thousand and twenty three, um, a bill that lifted the threshold for how much, um, how the dollar amount that a small entity, like small city, small wastewater district and so forth, um, uh, how you, how much you could do to, to self perform your work. So do your work in-house rather than contracting out. And that lid was lifted a couple of years ago. Uh, folks wanted to bring it back down. And so, uh, House Bill nineteen sixty six essentially would have kept a higher cap, but made it contingent upon what they called exigent circumstances. So you could only, um, do the in-house work if you were just about at an emergency. Um, that's kind of a bad way to run a public agency, so that bill did not make it out of committee. But, um, it's, it's an illustration of how what was a very, very good bill two years ago passed unanimously. It can be undone in the years ahead, and I do. And I do expect to see versions of that um coming back in future years as well. The other thing we mentioned early on um in our January uh update was the potential for a road use charge or what we call RUC. Uh, that really hasn't grown legs. There was a little bit of talk early on, but there's really nothing behind it. The transportation packages that came out, it's only in the House, as I understand, the House version of the transportation package. And it's it's a pilot project, it's really not much. So RUC did not make it through the session this year. With that, um we are going to pivot to talking about budgets and revenue because that is going to be the only thing we talk about after tomorrow's cutoff. And it's pretty much the only thing we're talking about anyway around town. Uh, it's it's um it's a big budget year, right? We know we have a budget deficit, the number is still being debated, but counted at about sixteen million, sixteen billion dollars. I wish it was a million billion dollars. Um, at the same time that a lot of big ideas have floated through the legislature this year. And so there um there is a need for even more money to get those ideas into action. Um, you probably are aware, there are three budgets that are introduced um during the legislative session. There's an operating budget and you can think of that as how the state manages its operations, its services. Transportation, that's the stuff we we use to get around, and the capital budget. And those are the things that you can touch, so building things or planning for building things. Those are the three budgets. Then you have this whole other piece called revenue, we'll get to that in a second. So um one thing that I really want to call out in the uh operating budget, because it's huge on A W C's priority list, as well as several other key organizations, is the Public Works Assistance Account. So your ability to get low interest loans in order to do public works projects, it's at risk. Now, every um budget has two versions of it at this point. Now tomorrow or the next day or whenever we get a new um budget compromise, then we'll have one version to talk about, which will be pretty great. But for right now, we're gonna talk about it in terms of the House budget and the Senate budget. It's a lot. Um, so in the House operating budget, two hundred and eighty-eight million of the four hundred million in the Public Works Assistance Account is swept into the general fund. That's a high number, enough to make you want to scream and say no until you hear what happens in the Senate budget. Now, the Senate budget, operating budget sweeps a hundred and sixty-five million out. Yes, that is less than two hundred and eighty-eight. It also replaces that money later on in the budget, sounds great. But in order to balance their transportation budget, the Senate took um all of their um that the responsibilities that WashDOT has to replace fish culverts, according to the federal injunction. And they put that responsibility in the capital budget. And by doing that, they they took the Public Works Assistance Account to fund that in perpetuity. Since we don't know how high these costs are gonna run and the current estimates are really high and there's more culverts being identified every day that need to be replaced, it's essentially what it amounts to is a a permanent redirection of Public Works Assistance Funding into the Fish Culverts Program. So um really bad news for cities, really bad news for any agency that relies on these low interest loans in order to do capital projects. Um, that's why A W C is very opposed and many other organizations are voicing very loud concerns about it. As near as we can tell, should that plan survive, any projects that are currently funded should be okay. There's some gray area around that, there's a lot of, a lot of confusion, but the word on the street, or at least the budget writers, say their intent is not to put at risk current projects. However, future projects, if you built this into your planning, um there wouldn't be a lot of money left. The s- the Senate budget writers will tell you that eventually that fund will build itself back up through um repayments of the loans. Not optimistic on that, it would take a very long time, as well as relying on future legislative budget allocations. Again, that's not something we really want to trust, right? Cause it goes year by year, who knows where the economy is gonna be in two years and so forth. It could take a long time to get us back to where we were with the four hundred million very healthy Public Works Assistance Account. Um, so big fight to come there, I hope to see big changes. Um, I haven't heard the latest on where those those conversations are, however. So that's why the House operating budget with their paid up, the uh Public Works Assistance Account sweep looks a little bit nicer, because at least it's not permanent. So at that point, I guess we'll take it as a win if we get that. But um it does leave up to up to the legislators to figure out how to deal with the federal injunction on fish fish passage. Another um concerning thing in the operating budget, but at a much smaller scale, um M R S C, we know uh cities rely on their services, they needed about a hun- a half a million dollars more in their budget. They asked for that, the Senate gave them what they have now. So they kept their cu- their current funding level. The House actually went farther and they cut the funding down by seven hundred thousand dollars. So that is concerning, we know they do really, really good work, they operate on a small budget. These are small numbers compared to the overall budget package. But um uh we hope, we hope it that we don't get the House version on that one. Um, transportation budgets, so there's two versions of that as well. Uh, you've probably heard about gas tax. So the interesting thing about that I've heard, and I, you know, I'm still relatively new with this, but I've heard it's the first time we are contemplating raising gas tax, but not giving you new projects with it. This is really to to keep the current projects going because of inflation. Um, and we want to see those projects done, but it's, yeah, it's the first time we're raising the gas tax without adding a couple of 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 sweeteners to that deal. The Senate package was bipartisan, which is a feat in this legislative session, they're fairly proud of it. Um, so the Senate version has a six cent gas tax versus the House version proposes nine cents. And we'll say, yeah, six cents feels better than nine cents, but then when you think about how the Senate had to balance by taking the Public Works Assistance Account to take care of the um the uh the Fish Culverts Program, I don't know, maybe maybe nine cents might feel better. We'll see where all that shakes out. I am not hearing a lot of information on where the transportation packages are, but I assume that those conversations um are moving along well as well. So um, yeah, I, what I've heard is that tomorrow with a revenue package coming out, a new revenue package that should they find agreement, um then the budget packages would come together pretty quickly thereafter. So I'm expecting, again, we might adjourn on time, it could actually happen. But I'm gonna hand it over to Brian to talk a little bit about the revenue situation and recognize fully that this is changing under our feet. So what we're talking about tonight could change before we're even done talking tonight.
Right, yeah, and I um I will have some information available uh that I'll send out um later this evening. It does look like the uh the outline or the titles, if not all the detail and the words, are available for um kind of um what they're pivoting to. Um, I think um, you know, there was a pretty strong reaction to what was proposed a couple of weeks ago, um particularly around the wealth tax or the intangible tax. And then also the um either the um payroll tax or the um kind of specifically targeted B and O on um businesses with larger gross revenues. Um, those um specifically the um intangible tax, um that looks like that is off the table um for this session as well as the um um payroll tax as well for individuals making over a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, that looks like that is off the table as as well. Um, last week, the governor had made a pretty strong um public statement, essentially saying I would veto an intangible tax if you balanced the budget on it. Um, I would consider like a test case, we'll see. Um, but just on my kind of cursory review of what was um released today, um it looks like um kind of the pillars of their revenue solution are going to be property tax. Um, I think you're gonna see a lot of language around that being either um tied to K twelve at the state level or tied to um law enforcement at the local level. Um, um my um, I think of those as um ballot strategies, I think. Um, and hopefully the requirements for locals won't necessarily be um um very stringent. But I I think it is more likely than not if there the legislature enacts a slew of new revenue options or or adjustments to the existing property tax cap, that there will be a uh response um through the initiative process. And I think the legislature is thinking about um how that can be um quite frankly marketed uh as we move out of the legislative session and into like a elections arena. So that's why you'll see, I think, a lot of language associated with um replacing the existing one percent cap with a three percent cap uh uh being tied to specific, perhaps more voter friendly services than just m- buying me a Microsoft three sixty subscription for next year. Um, so um uh so property tax, um it does look like B and O is going to be um part of the proposed revenue solution moving forward. Um, there is a fairly um uh it's a, it's a pretty fairly complex rubric of what rates will be applied to what services and what changes. Um, but but I guess um the way I would describe it is instead of having the the targeted um kind of larger rate that was proposed for the higher grossing businesses, it's now more of a everybody feels the pain kind of model. Um, and then it does look like they are perhaps um expanding upon um capital gains. Um, and um um, and um and based on the successful kind of legal challenges um that um I think they're they're hoping they can lean on capital gains uh more significantly moving forward. Uh, those, I thought, I think those are the key components, there's certainly other things. There's a a list of kind of other loopholes and things like that they're looking at, but those are the big pieces.
Thanks, Brian, tracking all that in real time is big. I've looked at some of these bills and it will be a while before I understand them fully, so maybe by tomorrow, we'll see. So where do your priorities stand in these budgets? So we um submitted a local community project request through the capital budget. Um, we won sponsorship from um Representative Springer, we owe him a thank you. We asked for two million dollars for the civic campus design phase. We were unsuccessful this year. I do believe this is the type of thing we will want to prepare for next year and to think about some interim actions that we can take to familiarize your local delegation um with the project, with the spaces that you're using right now, right? To bring this really to life for them, so I definitely want to um to keep this alive. Why this happened is honestly, it's the capital budget was less than expected. Now, we were talking early in January about how if we had tax proposals on the table, that there would be new bonding potential for the state. So we were optimistic that the capital budget would look really good, but we couldn't have anticipated things like sweeping, you know, the capital budget to make the fish uh culverts work, right? So it ended up being used in a lot of creative ways to balance the other budgets and um didn't end up being the capital budget that we've seen in recent history. Um, a lot of things did not get funded, a lot of things, or programs got funded at a much lower level um than 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 they asked for. And sometimes that can create some problems too, as you can anticipate. Um, Third Avenue Funding, there was no transportation package this year to to add that into um because the transportation um budgets that are just for maintenance and and continuing what we have on only, not able, not able to add anything new to that. As far as funding for Big Rock Ballfields Park, um we hope to go through the R C O program, Recreation and Conservation Office, they have some some grant programs that might work, one that is per- perfect for this uh for that sort of park project. Um, I looked through the operating budgets today to see what they look like. Um, there is funding for these programs in both the Senate and the House version. There's a little bit more money in the Senate than in the House, but only it's a it's a difference of one million out of out of twenty-two million. So it's it's a tiny difference between the two. So there will be grants going forward. What I did notice in the House operating budget is that there is some language attached to not just this program, but a couple of other programs as well, that this the legislature could claw that money back. And they wouldn't allocate it and claw it back, but they to to a project. But they could say, okay, you have this much for grants, but before the grant program opens for bids, um opens for applications, they could stop it and say we need that money back for the general fund. So kind of problematic language makes it a little bit of a um nebulous um grant program to to uh to navigate if that if that version, if the House version is what ends up in the compromise package. So um I'm I'm more on the Senate side on this one. We 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 prefer a little bit of clarity as well as the slightly higher amount of funding um to see if we can leverage that program for your park. Um, but it probably will end up being a lower amount than we've seen in recent years, which will obviously make the grant pro- ga- grant application process a lot more competitive. So um we'll keep an eye on that and where those programs end up. Um, should the the grant programs continue, they'll probably open up either this fall or next spring. So we are looking at kind of a longer timeline and when I see that come come forward, I will certainly flag that for you. That concludes our prepared remarks. So um let us know, do you have questions? Do you wanna talk further about anything? Are you hearing rumors that we're not hearing and so forth?
Yeah, on the lot splitting ten ninety-six, I was looking at it and it sort of breaks it down the requirements and it almost makes it feel like the city of Duval would not be subject to this at all because the under the middle housing minimum debt tier requirement, it says cities with a population of less than twenty-five thousand within a contiguous U G A with the largest city in a county. So we are not contiguous with Seattle. So I I maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, but the lot splitting wouldn't apply to us then. Or what, because we aren't contiguous with the largest city.
I think you are probably right on that. There were a lot of different amendments throughout the process that I haven't fully tracked, so I think you're probably reading that correct, yeah.
Yeah, it it won't impact us directly, but um what happens in other jurisdictions will most definitely impact our transportation uh on King County roads um in our railways. So um, well, this is another one of those cases where we can shut our doors today and have no development and our transportation system will continue to get worse until the state funds um the east to west connections um in the studies and figuring out how to get more people to it from and and until King County finds a solution to funding roads. Um, and with only two hundred and fifty thousand people in unincorporated King County, uh the only ones legally required to pay county road fund tax, uh that won't happen at this point um until people in cities also pay for the county roads of the counties that we live on and the roads that we drive on. So uh we do drive on those roads for free, uh so that's just a big impact. Um, well, this is not direct, they're the significant uh ancillary effect of our community.
Uh, yeah, it's all in the same.
It's the same one, yes. So I I think that's a good point about areas around us, but I'm just thinking, I can't remember how many people live in Monroe, but some of the other rapidly growing cities that are impacting our traffic, which would be, you know, Sultan and some of those other communities, I think they would also be small enough and not contiguous with the largest city in the home county. Or no, I'm just trying to understand it, if you know it differently, I'd I'd love to hear.
Well, I, right, and Katie answered, and then it's it contiguous Monroe is not a contiguous city, but people are coming from those contiguous cities to come down to agree and come down King County roads to avoid four oh five and I five. So it is a significant impact, whether you think it's close to us or not.
Oh, I'm not saying it's no, but I guess I was just saying that I don't think that Monroe necessarily would even be allowed. And I don't know how many people live in Monroe, if you got anything, I think at this point. Somewhere twenty, twenty, twenty now. So it looks like they, Monroe would definitely be, actually, anyway, I was just noting because the lot splitting was something that I think concerned myself and council membershipers. So I was, when I read the details, I thought, oh.
Well, I'm sort of just more of a general question and it's fair if you want to sort of make your bet on this, but there's obviously a lot of uncertainty at federal level. The open questions around here impacts, which are sort of that new since they started this process that have economic impact. Um, when the legislature goes through the budget processes, they, you know, what are the sort of the base lines in terms of, is it optimized around everything staying the same? Does it, is it optimized around sort of worst case scenario? Because there is obviously funding streams from the federal level that still could be clawed back or cut off, plus the adverse impacts of tariffs on both local businesses and unemployment rates, uh you know, all of things that impact local revenue collection. I'm just curious and curious on your thoughts uh on on that.
Yeah, and it is like ominous cloud, sorry, Brian. Um, but it's like an ominous cloud that's kind of right behind all the thinking on the budgets right now. And it's like, how do you deal with the unknown, uh that is a real unknown, um and Uh that is a real unknown um and changing by the day landscape. Um I think earlier in session, there was a lot of just fear for putting anything on paper, right? And now that we're getting close to the end of session, um it's like, listen, we're never gonna know until it happens. So the smartest thing to do is um as the governor pointed out in his his uh letter last week on the on the budget. Is to have a rainy day fund ready to go, because we really don't know, these, this is a day by day thing, we're already hearing about federal programming going away. Federal funding going away in littler chunks, but Medicaid is the big one that no one really wants to talk about. And the likelihood that the Medicaid um funding changes and the state has to figure out what they want to do with that is really high. That hasn't happened yet, in a way, it's almost making the budget deal happen faster. But the likelihood that they could be called back for a special session to deal with um a big hole in the budget from a big change at the federal level. Is is higher than it has been, um and everyone is cognizant of that. But again, they're budgeting based on what they know right now and um and hopefully we'll see. Um currently, the rainy day funds in the legislature's budgets don't look real great. Um but the governor definitely made that a line in the sand that he would veto if they don't protect that rainy day fund. Um Brian, other thoughts?
Uh no, that's a great, you know, it's a great analysis, I um. Uh you know, when I was sitting around uh in the legislature and Saturday, thinking about special session, not special session. And thinking about how I didn't want to be there, and then I thought about who really doesn't want to be there is all the members. Um cause it's been a not the greatest session for them, given um just kind of all the dynamics and and some of the. Um choices they've had to make, um and you know, obviously for me, I live in Olympia, it's less disruptive, but for them, this really is like. Um n- not part of their life, um or you're some something completely different, so. I would be surprised if they. Didn't get done in time. Um but one of the main reasons, in addition to just how unhappy they all are right now and how much they want to go home. Is sticking around for that pessimism that you brought up. So the the current forecast that they're crafting their budget on was um generated on March eighteenth. And at that time, I would argue that based on the information the forecaster had to make that prediction. There was pessimism built in, um he reduced the revenue forecast by about five hundred million this biennium. And then five hundred million in the ensuing biennium, so around, you know, and exacerbated what was considered the budget problem by another billion. Now, the scale is, we're talking in a scale in between over the, you know, between seventy to eighty billion per biennium, so. You know, five hundred million there isn't isn't that big in the state scale, although it hurts me to say that when I think about. You know, my personal finances and some other things and how abstract that is, but so there was some pessimism built in. But probably not enough. Um and so the next scheduled forecast would be in June. Um and I would, given that they're already trying to have challenges um between either revenue solution or making cuts. Like I can't see them sticking around for that. Um but I do think to Katie's point, it it feels like we are headed to. One of two or both scenarios where the governor will have to initiate across the board cuts. Because of changes made at the federal level or or a further uh or or changes made at um in the. Changes to our global economy that that significantly impact revenue generation. And or um probably a reconvening of the legislature. Concomitant with some like federal timeline like October or something like that, so so neither of those things would surprise me. Um there is, as Katie mentioned, um. Some desire to maintain a robust. Um rainy day account or balance, um but that desire gets balanced with. Do I save money in the bank or do I cut, you know, kidney dialysis, you know, and things like that? Or do I, do I, do I vote on a, you know, B and O tax that I don't like, or do I spend the money I have in the bank? And history has shown us more often than not, the legislature chooses to spend the money in the bank. I'm not predicting that's what's gonna happen, but that, when those are the choices before the legislature historically. They choose to use their cash first rather than making additional programmatic cuts or um additional tax votes. So you see balances of like five hundred million left instead of say something like two billion.
Thank you. Yeah, um when you talked about fishing culverts, the fish culverts that are being funded. Did I hear you say that that's federally mandated to construct those? So can you go back over again what you said about the budget being swept up to fund those or or the impact of the budget of that mandate?
Yeah, so the impact will be to the Public Works Assistance Account, and it is federally, um it's a federal injunction. So it was a a suit, a lawsuit brought against Washdott specifically um by the tribes um for historic. Erosion of the salmon population because these culverts are impassable to fish. And so they've been um trying to build these, you may have seen some projects related to this for Wa- Washdott projects specifically. Over the last few years, but it's been at a kind of a snail's pace, and so um the courts aren't real happy, right? And so they're putting a lot of pressure on the state to move that along quicker, they need the money to do that, and that's where they saw. Four hundred million dollars in a public works assistance account, and they're like, guess what, this is public works, this looks like it will fit. Now, this is me putting a lot of words in somebody's mouth that may not have said that, right? So that's my read of what happened, um and it looked like the right um the right decision without maybe understanding what public works assistance accounts mean. Those loans mean to small communities. There is an opportunity, so I'm glad you asked the question, because there's obviously culverts that relate to local governments as well. And you know, utilities that have to be moved, you know, there's costs related to this that um could be if they open it up to locals. That you would get benefit too, right? So in a, in a worst case scenario, if we can't get the public works assistance account back, can we at least expand it beyond Washdott culverts? This would make a lot of sense, especially if local community culverts are downstream from the Washdott ones, right? If the fish can't make it past, say, City X, their covert, then it doesn't matter how good Washdott's covert is. Um huge props to Carl Schrader at A W C, he understands this um issue better than probably anyone in the state. I'm just gonna say that, and he can follow up if you have, if you have more, you know, questions about how all that works, um I can I can have him follow up with you. Um but he's working right now behind the scenes to see that if if we can't prevent this Senate solution. Can we at least find a win for local governments in all of this?
I just wanted to say, um Katie and Brian, thank you for all of your work on the grounds, all of the late nights. Um my phone deemed at two thirty this morning from uh first a lobbyist and then uh the original prime sponsor legislator of the Rec- Recycling Reform Act. And uh I know that it's been very, very challenging, um not just with the budget issues at the local level. But federal level in addition to just the sheer volume of bills, um it's really unprecedented. Um and the fact that you have been able to not just um not only just make it through. Uh but keep really close track and we're still close to the Association of Washington Cities um in our other cities that are our partners. And um and getting our voice heard is greatly appreciated, um and so as we get get to that close of session. Um really hoping that things slow down a little bit after cutoff, um and that you all get a chance to focus on. Um public works assistance fund and and the other remaining issues that we have left, so thank you for everything that you do for us.
Thank you, thanks, it's an honor to represent you, um it's been fun to get to know your issues and get to know your city a bit, and I look forward to continuing that. Thanks for having us tonight.
Uh which brings us to our third item uh for discussion this evening, updates to the personnel man- personnel manual. And Duval Municipal Code Title Four with Cynthia McNabb, our city administrator.
Thank you, good evening, council, mayor, staff that are here. Um we'll pull up the PowerPoint uh that I put together, it was in your packet. Uh really excited that I'm here, this project probably. Well, it took close to a year, but really focused in the last four months on putting all the pieces together. To bring a package um to city council for consideration, that slide. So why here, I mean, there's probably about four hundred pages in this council packet just on this project alone. So here are kind of the things I put together around why we are working on this project. But also, it's one of the very first things from here I need to do in October of twenty twenty two, was to engage in this work. And it took a while to get here, but really excited and proud of the work that was done um to get here. I had a lot of stakeholders helping me along the way. So first thing I looked at is this municipal code, the section around Title Four Personnel is extremely out of date. It was mostly written in nineteen eighty nine and nineteen ninety seven, and from an employment law perspective. Uh the world has changed significantly, state, current, local laws have changed significantly. So just from an outdated perspective, it needed to be changed. I'll give you an example of probably one of the worst outdated sections of the code. Which was, there was a section on workers' compensation, which it's been called now for uh decades. But our code called it workmen's compensation, um it's been a long time since it was called that. So just, there was out of date nomenclature, but also out of date provisions. Um the DMC had not been updated to reflect current state and federal law. Uh it did not reflect current practices, policies and procedures which had been adopted by council either in resolution. Um or policy since some of the language that was in the DMC. Uh it conflicted with provisions of our collective bargaining agreements all over the place. Um this, when you have conflicts between your code and your collective bargaining agreement. That creates a potential for arbitration dispute, because an arbitrator is going to look at your code and they're gonna look at the collective bargaining agreement. And when they conflict, you create ambiguity, and that can create confusion for arbitrators if we ever unfortunately had to go to. An arbitration in a dispute, it also creates staff confusion. So one of the areas that the DMC said, all staff will get a copy of the municipal code upon hire. But either by policy practice to other work that happened since nineteen eighty nine. Staff were aware that things are different than how it's written in the municipal code, so there was also some staff confusion. Uh staff need a better resource for understanding HR unemployment laws and rules. Uh having HR rules in a municipal code is not nimble, it's not adaptable, I'm updating quickly. So for instance, in January of this year, there was a change to how in the, under the Washington State sick leave law. How sick leave law, how sick leave accruals can be used for school closures. That right now would conflict with what's in the municipal code, it's unable to be adopted. We'd have to change that provision of the code as well as the whole section on sick leave to effectuate that change. And then lastly, no comparable city has similar exhaustive personal provisions in the municipal code that we could find, probably went out there. But uh we did a pretty large scale search of um like jurisdictions, and we couldn't find one that was comparable. It just simply isn't best practice, um two city attorneys have looked at it, uh both are part city attorney or. Said this just isn't good or best practice, next slide. Um so what did we do to prepare for this project and the changes that we're recommending? So first, we reviewed municipal codes from other cities to compare. Um in your packet, you have a comp chart that links cities to show you if you want to do your own research. We reviewed existing laws at the state and federal level as well as anticipated changes to law. So while a lot of you were paying attention to the land use changes that were happening in this legislature. I was paying attention to the P F M L, to the collective bargaining rules, um so uh kind of paying attention to what might come. Uh review collective bargaining agreements to identify conflicts between the CBAs and the Duval Municipal Code, our current CBAs are in your packet. Um I spoke to our union shop stewards, to nonrepresented staff and the directors who defined their interests. And what they found would be most useful, I will tell you when the shop steward said. He has been promised an employment handbook from three city administrators and it has never come, and please, please, please make this so. Um I reviewed the Duval Municipal Code to identify areas where they were wholly legislative. So there are some areas that are totally the purview of city council. And where those existed, I built a crosswalk so you can see. Uh what was uh stricken out from the code. Uh where things landed in the employment handbook and the leave guide. And then those areas where identified they were either myths in terms of legislative or administrative. Largely the role of council, where they were largely the role of council, I left those provisions in the Duval Municipal Code. And in some cases, they're also embedded in the employee handbook. Because the procedures for those are fairly complicated, like reclassification. And then finally, I prioritized um end of last year and this year. A creation of a couple of single issue employment policies that were emerging, so for instance, animals in the workplace. Um inclement weather, work and a new policy for um uh no. Light duty, so we didn't have a policy to allow people to return to work on light duty when they were injured or ill. So we just needed to build some policy framework around that, then I recreated our remote work policy. So that there's a little more forming procedure around employees who work from home. That's why, and those you'll see in the appendices of the uh draft employment. Um okay, so the proposed changes, so it looks like a C of red, um and it is. So the proposed change includes striking most of the Duval Municipal Code, again, consistent with how other cities do it. Except for items that related to the Civil Service Commission, so there were two provisions that are really particular to police work. And those were a section that says we have a civil service commission. And then there was another about reserve officers, those I left in. And then again, provisions that are wholly the realm of city council, you'll see those remain in the Duval Municipal Code. Um place HR and personnel rules in an employee handbook, a copy, a draft copy of the here. So with all the appendices, this beast is. Wonder sure about, uh over. It has almost everything you can think of that touches an employee. Um wrote a leave guide, cause that's something different um for employees to reference easily. About how to get the leave that they're entitled to, I need sort of leave accruals with all the form that they need. Um for instance, the pay, Washington Pay Family Medical Leave Form is in here, there's state law about when employees get this form. Um so tried to put forms that were useful in the leave guide. Um there is new language that I embedded in the uh municipal code to write a provision. So that um there's an annual review from the city council. So that city councils are prized of any changes to personnel rules or changes to the handbook or leave guide. So that once a year, if there is a change that is made, um even if it's not. Uh the realm of city council, we would still come to city council and show you every year any changes that were made. And then maintaining as well as embedding into the handbook the rules regarding reclassification, reorganization, opposition. That's one of the most recent changes to the Duval Municipal Code, so that remains, but it's more fully fleshed out now. Next slide. So this just covers the current review process, so I wrote a draft of all these documents. And I thank to the clerk team that was extremely patient with helping and getting documents put in places and formatting. Just something that the directors could look at, the director level review is complete, the city attorney review is complete. Uh both the handbook and the leave guide were sent to the unions, their reviews are complete. Uh city clerk continues review ongoing for like scripters errors, dramatic changes, because I've cut and pasted from state law and federal law. Um the formatting is a little wonky, but once we're done with this process, we'll make it pretty and bind it um for staff. Um and then this is the first touch um today at city council. Okay, so next steps, uh city council has been provided the following items to its sister review. So comparable city chart to take a look at what how other cities treat uh personnel issues in their code. The collective bargaining agreements, the current ones. Uh the draft handbook and the draft employee leave guide. A crosswalk between the DMC and draft employee handbook and leave guide, I have to embed in my own notes in there, just to kind of tell you what I was thinking. Um they're my thoughts, um and then a bill drafts, bill draft strike. And then a bill drafts, bill draft strike version of the DMC with the proposed changes as well as a draft resolution that kind of outlines the changes. So from here, any suggestions or requested changes you have to anything should be sent to the mayor. And if you would provide their first round of changes or questions by April 25th, she'll get those to me. And then I will go ahead. Once I receive anything, I'll make a comment in the bill draft version of whatever document you have questions or comments on. And I'll bring those to the May 6th meeting. So that's the project. I know there was a lot of material for you all to review. So happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I'll go.
Um, we took four questions, but I just wanted to say a huge thank you to our city administrator Cynthia McNabb. She missed, there was actually a third attorney. The attorney that was attorney when I became mayor, that was trying to push these through and get this through. At the time, my first term as mayor, we did not have city council support to do this work. That has created some significant risk to the city, both legally and financially in the low run. And so this has been an ongoing priority. And despite all of the additional work that Cynthia has been doing on many, many, many different things, this has been a priority all along. And to get to this point is huge progress. And I just want to publicly express my sincere thanks. This is, you know, part of the long-term goal of our city growing up, doing things professionally, reducing our risk both legally and financially and supporting our employees. Without an employee handbook and things are clear, it really creates challenges for your workforce when there's a lot of ambiguity and ambiguity built in. So this is in addition to the legal and financial risk reduction. This is also a big boost for our employees and showing our support for them, our care for them as well as making sure that the tools, they have the tools they need to use their leave. Reach out to appropriate human services, human resources related folks, et cetera. And it's, it's truthfully an incredible lift to get this kind of work done. Especially as you see some of the code being nearly 30 years old, that was just wholly unacceptable. And so we are almost there. And hopefully, I do request the council get everything in by the 25th so that we can get this done and approved and finalized for our staff and for our legal purposes before the end of May. So thank you.
Questions from council.
Yeah, this is really great. I love how you work it down into legislative only. And then things that are clearly integrated. And this came to council many years ago. There was a concern because the, the way it had been presented was that, you know, we're just going to get rid of chapter four in general, and then a purely administrative policy would be put in place. I felt very uncomfortable with that. There's a lot of things in there that in our legislative and I did not feel comfortable with that. And so I thought the things that showed more of those approach or that personnel policy was very clear that any update to it had to come to the center to be approved, which is the standard. And I see the way you wrote it. Yeah. Excellent. I appreciate it. The second time something came to council, it was to contract with an outside company that narrowly worked with police policies and they were trying a new product. And they, we were being asked if the city wanted to contract with this company to run our personnel policy. And when I looked into it, it did not look like they had experience in the state of Washington at the time and I felt super uncomfortable with it. So I wanted to add a little bit of information of why perhaps the council, previous council several years ago weren't comfortable yet. This is a wonderful approach and I love it. I have a couple of suggestions. I see that there would be a once a year review if there were changes. What I've seen in some cities is it's very clear that it will say, you know, anything that potentially could impact the budget or aspects of legislative would immediately come in. If there were changes, but anything else can change. Or maybe you could change it, but you'd have to notify council. One, does that make sense? Then being able to change something that is purely that says mixed legislative and not, we wouldn't know about it for a year. I think that, I feel a little bit uncomfortable. Like I said, both policy I, I'm going to be looking at five years ago. Personnel policy, they and so if you're going to let that go, you have to go and want to be there, here's where the change. And I feel like there should be at least done it over and all that. Something that has legislative component and change immediately. Maybe within five days or you know what I mean? Something like that. Because I do feel like that is what I see.
This is the starting place.
Yeah.
So that should be pretty clear in the draft ordinance, because it's a brand new language. And I think that might be 4.0202. It's one of the very first sections. So I mean, I tend to agree. I mean, from my approach, and this is based on my experience with KCLS and thought community attorney. Things that impact the budget need to come through, through the normal course budget cycle. And I don't see a problem. I mean, in my mind, this work of changing the personal code or the personal handbook would either be consistent with what I do during the budget process, it's prepared for budget.
Yeah.
Or alternatively, they have to be changed because law changed. Everything else frankly is probably administrative. But I, I don't have a problem complying with the rules and procedures of council and the mayor knows of that myth review. And once it gets done, I don't want to touch this all the time. So it's either going to be in the budget or January 1st, we'll log it.
Yeah.
So.
I think that that is how it would be. I just think it would be nice to make it clear that, you know, budget related legislative changes would, you know.
And I'd encourage you to submit that in comments. There are different types of things we can debate in council when we walk through the line work. We always bond tuned a little bit in that.
I always appreciate kind of hearing how staff feels about it before I give, because sometimes my comment, I would maybe modify it slightly once I hear feedback. Thank you for your, and I have something else that I'll wait and see what else.
Other members of council? That's my member Cameron.
I don't have a question or anything, just an overall comment, but it obviously would have been nice to get some kind of update earlier, but I can't help feel the delay. And the person we have is our city administrator. So uniquely qualified in this body of work. So I'm just really happy already with the, with the draft and I think that's great.
That was my other.
Yeah, I have a question on the, I guess the format of it where the, it looks like the reference ordinance number is like 1266 and one dot seven dot 21. What are all those references for?
They're references to every time council approves something that got embedded into Title IV. So those references are old. That will be another document when we get through the council deliberation process that basically will show, it'll be a newer, instead of we'll say like repealed, 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 say all those old references will all be in there. So there's a little more, one more clean document that's going to have to be written at the conclusion of the deliberation process. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm still not quite clear what, what is the.
What page are you on?
Well, I'm on page two or three. Yeah, this actually. It could be a personal paragraph.
Of the code?
Yeah.
Oh, I have a copy of the code.
For example, like 4.02020. And there's a paragraph, a number four, I think that's just a title or something, but underneath it says ordinance number 1302.
Yeah, referencing like the 1997 in terms of the, the original statute.
Yeah, the, the final document that will have to be drafted will show basically every old ordinance, like ordinance 539, section 1.1, 1989 as amended. It'll show which ordinances have to be repealed to effectuate getting those sections out of the Duval Municipal Code.
Okay. Comment before I start going to the council member now, but again, sort of, you know, appreciate the body work because it's massive. I know there have been number instances where we've wanted to refer, like we don't have an HR department, but we also don't have an HR manager. So, you know, in terms of at least having that piece of it sort of codified. I, I was curious to sort of, and this is more just from my own experience and once you get this crafted, there's a section where you go through and certain, I think it's on hiring, you know, the employees acknowledge that they've reviewed certain material and agree to the terms of part of their, their contract. Is there any thought in terms of implementing the annual compliance exam or test or check? Or, I mean, I do that in sort of a corporate workplace every year, whether it's around ethical practices or bribery or whatever it is that we, you know, again, need to be affirmed. Would that be part of this process at all? Or is that, I know that's not part of the documentation here, but does that go into the overall?
Yes, in two different ways. So since I came, we've had, this year we had to have it in March because I had canceled twice. But every November now, I have built in an annual staff training day to go over policy changes, reminders about workplace harassment. So all of those good HR policies that you want to do training on annually. That will now be every November unless we have both have bomb cyclone and it's snowstorm. So that usually I'm trying to normalize that that is the first or second, like of November every year now. The second piece is, and thank you to council, it was part of the ARPA funding was to augment our ERG, our enterprise resource for UKG. So now, and thank you to Director McMahon, we just got assigned a UKG person. We're almost done with getting all of the performance review process embedded in the UKG. So it all will be online. The second piece is to do the training platform that's embedded in UKG. So every year I can do recorded webinar that staff can go in, just listen at their desk to a recorded webinar, do some, you know, questions and have all of that on the So a couple more things coming down the pike on HR management that kind of helps this project.
Appreciate that. Any questions from council member? If I could further ask,
can you hold? I'm curious to what degree or what kinds of things are we looking for in our review? I'm not a qualified HR person. And clearly you've done a lot of work and it's excellent work. I mean, the, the depth and it's very rich what you've done here. It's hard for me to imagine finding a lot is missing or something like that. But are there certain things we should be looking for for council review?
I guess if, if I were in your shoes, that I'll answer the question. Looking for things where you would want more discretion or to review more regularly if you find things in there. But putting back on my city administrator hat, really keeping in mind the role clarity around legislative and administrative. But there are things in the handbook that you know, you think should have a different council touch or something like that. That's what. Everything else has been reviewed by city attorney. So if you have, and I'm a labor and employment attorney, so it was good to have my work reviewed. I'd city attorney found a couple of things really good for this little different. Kind of something I guess I would look at is your role as a city council and where you might want to have some influence.
Thank you.
I know we're approaching there, but one more question.
So the one section I see as a change from our current feature is how we handle non-represented employees. Often, traditionally, and we are code work, we agreed something in a union contract, our non-represented staff. Now I can understand the ease of having it look that way, that, you know, if you bargain something for the union employees, non-represented, everyone else would get it also. The issue I see here is there's two. Number one, sometimes you're using bargaining about these things to get something else, like you're doing an exchange. And that concept of the exchange doesn't necessarily apply to the non-represented because that whole offset financially sometimes the non-represented aren't involved in that whole option and it doesn't necessarily apply. So you aren't going to get a carrot to someone when you aren't getting something back in a union contract. That's your purpose. Secondly, historically, we have utilized directors and staff at the bargaining table. And so it just feels like it might be a little bit awkward to think that you're bargaining for something that you're also going to get, right? And I'm, I'm not, you know, implying that I'm going to bargain, you know, thinking of themselves, but it does create kind of an awkward situation where you might be at the bargaining table benefiting for what you're arguing for. And I, it gives me a little bit of a yucky feeling. And so I'm not really sure how other cities have approached this. I don't know that I've seen the exact then that it's just autopilot. Anytime you negotiate something for the union, everyone gets it.
Okay, so what it says is for certain benefits where, and I selected the one where it would be easier to administer because the challenge of administering a different version of it for the 12 of us who are non-represented would be actually cost the city more money than us offering those benefits. So it's the health insurance plan and the deductibles and a portment that is given to Teamsters, having to run a separate healthcare scheme for 12 employers inefficient. And the second was around deferred comp. So really it's not everything that's in the collective bargaining agreements would come to the non-represented. It was around the benefit structure that is negotiated with Teamsters. And frankly, you all grew the teams contract. So you could conceivably, if there was a benefit in the Teamsters contract that you did not want to apply to non-represented, at that time, you could pass a resolution that says, yes, I know we have this provision that's basically me too on benefits. But if you didn't want a particular benefit to apply to the non-re, you could make that adjustment when you pass the Teamsters contract. It's really only your benefit because administering a different AWC plan for 12 people is just really challenging.
Are we currently in every single thing listed here? It's the same right now?
No.
So what are we changing and how much would that cost to align if all of these items match the?
Let me ask you to put that question into the main. Just because of time and then we can prepare a response.
Do you see what I mean? Because it sounds like implementing this will change some benefits to non-represented. Is that what you're saying?
It would. I can answer the question in one minute. It would right now because council has not approved the vacation accrual schedule that the Teamsters got where the deferred comp, non-represented is do not get that benefit right now, all the Teamsters do.
Okay, could maybe we could get a cost estimate of what that would, how many employees would apply to, what expected and the cost it would be.
And if you could email that question and per the city administrator's request, that would be great.
And then could you hold your question like? I, I mean, that's.
No, I was just going to say that in 30 years, 30 plus years of working at a law company in both union and non-representative roles, there's not unusual after union negotiated a contract for those benefits to flow down to the.
Appreciate, no, appreciate the comment. So I'm going to call the city, the whole meeting to close at 6:15 PM and we'll be in at five, similarly to ish. ish.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, Duval City Council Meeting in order. You all please rise and bring your picelets. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. I am nation under God, and I am as well, with the receipt of justice and progress. Certainly, please, you all.
Yep. Mayor Okerlander.
Here.
Mayor for Tim Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Olin.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer. Ms. McHenry.
Here.
Mr. Supple.
Here.
Ms. Knappland.
Here.
Ms. Kufel.
Here.
Great, we have a quorum. On absences, we did receive an email from Councilmember Schaefer advising that he would not be here this evening. And do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? We have a motion for this evening's council agenda.
Someone.
All of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of the public, please say no. Finish the motion, please. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Councilmember Nathaniel, you have a question?
Sure. Yeah, I opened my packet there on my computer and it looked like there might have been a walk-on that was added. Is that something we need to amend to allow for the walk-ons? Maybe I, I missed that, but I just wanted to ask if that was something you need to do.
It is printed on the agenda that was published on the door and that's provided to council in your agenda. So no, there's no further amendment needed. Yes, it is.
And we didn't just have to turn the cow?
And we took that part in cow as well.
Okay.
So it's been noticed three times.
I didn't see it on my agenda that.
It's not on my printed one, but it's on
Yeah, it's not on the printed one.
Yeah, and we uploaded it earlier today.
And it's on the printed one right here.
Because it was solid, it's not on everyone's, we just were able to print just a few basic ones. So it might not be on everyone's printed agenda, but it is on, it's posted on ours.
All right. We have three proclamations this evening and I will go ahead and read those into the record. The first one we have is Arbor Day. Whereas trees are vital to the health and well-being of our community, providing clean air and water, enhancing property values, reducing energy costs and offering habitat for wildlife. And whereas the benefits of trees extend beyond the environment to strengthen our economy and improve the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. And whereas Arbor Day, a tradition that dates back to 1872, when it was first observed in Nebraska, has been a source of inspiration for millions of Americans to plant and care for trees. This tradition has played a significant role in fostering stewardship of our natural resources. Whereas through the dedication of volunteers, civic groups, schools and municipal staff, our community has planted thousands of trees in parks, streetscapes and private properties, playing a crucial role in building a healthier, more sustainable urban forest. And whereas Arbor Day is a time for us to reflect on the importance of trees and renew our commitment to planting, nurturing and preserving our tree canopy for future generations. It is a day to celebrate the role of trees in our lives and the environment. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of Duval. And I urge all residents to observe this day by planting trees and participating in community forestry activities that beautify our city and protect our environment. Also, I encourage community members to participate in our Earth and Arbor Day Festival on April 19th at Depot Park. I extend my heartfelt thanks to the staff members putting this event together for our community. Next proclamation is for Two Lights For Tomorrow. Whereas the City of Duval, with a profound sense of history, recognizes the monumental importance of honoring and commemorating the 250th anniversary of our nation's founding. Whereas the significant milestone, a rare and significant event in our nation's history, serves as a poignant reminder to our residents of the vital significance and relevance of our founding principles and ideals, which created a unique national identity worth fighting for. Whereas the events of 1775 that began the revolution, the year before independence was declared, are significant moments that signal the creation of a national identity and unity of purpose that transcended traditional geographic, cultural and societal divides. And whereas individuals and communities across all colonies came together to support their fellow compatriots. And whereas on the evening of April 18th, 1775, with impending hostile action from the British Army in Boston, Massachusetts, Paul Revere and William Dawes, along with other alarm writers, undertook a perilous ride to alert everyone in the countryside of the coming day. And whereas preceding their departure from Boston, a pre-arranged signal was set in the Old North Church steeple to ensure that the message got out and did not solely rely on just one or two alarm writers. And whereas the two lanterns that were the signal were immortalized in Henry Washworth Longfellow's poem, Paul Revere's Ride, as one of five lambs and two of five sea, and have become an enduring symbol of American vigilance, perseverance, preparedness in the face of adversity. And whereas those alarm writers and the citizens that answered the call to arms to serve and defend their fellow compatriots that night and the following day at the battles of Lexington and Concord, exemplify the spirit of community and shared responsibility that has defined our nation, send an exception. And whereas we are reminded 250 years later that the call for unity and the call to serve each other is no less relevant today than it was then. And whereas a national initiative has been proposed through collaboration from multiple states that two lights be displayed in public spaces across the country for all to see, marking that significant anniversary in April 2025 and the beginning of the 250th anniversary commemorations leading up to the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 2026. And whereas the two lights are a powerful symbol of our nation's resilience and unity is a call to action for all Americans to come together in remembrance and service. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby endorse this national initiative and call on all residents to unite in remembrance of our shared history, honor the sacrifices made by those who fought for our independence and remind ourselves of the values we hold dear today. Let us take pride in our nation's unity and resilience and be inspired to continue the legacy of service and sacrifice. Furthermore, I encourage all community centers, public spaces and all residents to take part in this symbolic display by prominently displaying two lights for all to see. Let these lights serve as a beacon of our collective commitment to a better tomorrow. And finally, I'll read a proclamation for National Community Development Week. Whereas the City of Duval's Community Development Department, a cornerstone of our city's growth, plays a pivotal role in shaping it. And whereas their work ensures that new and existing development not only reflects our community's values, but also preserves our small town character and meets the needs of current and future residents. Whereas this is a testimony, testament to the integral role each resident and business plays in our city's growth. Whereas the dedicated professionals within the Community Development Department, planners, building officials, permitting technicians and code enforcement work tirelessly to guide responsible land use, streamline permitting processes, enforce safety and zoning regulations and support sustainable, equitable development. And whereas through collaborative engagement with residents, neighborhood groups and partner agencies, the department has advanced critical projects, including updates to the comprehensive plan, transportation plan, updates to parks, trails and open spaces, and enhancements to our municipal code. And whereas the Community Development Department's commitment to excellence, innovation and responsive service has fostered economic opportunity, enhanced public safety and strengthened the quality of life for all who live, work and visit Duval. Now, I therefore, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, proclaim April 13th to 19th as National Community Development Week in the City of Duval. As mayor, I have seen firsthand the invaluable contributions of the department's staff to our city's growth, safety and vitality. I encourage all residents and businesses to join me in expressing our gratitude to them and the work that they do. Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to comments for the audience and I will read the rules into the record. And then if you do have members of the audience, they will have an opportunity to speak. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration, while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. Each speaker and all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to individual members of council or staff. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to PO Box 1300, Duval, Washington, 98019, or deposited at the City Hall Dropbox located at 15535 Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards and its commissions solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and consequently and subsequently furnish them to the city council or the relevant order commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. And with that, do we have anyone that would like to provide public comment this evening? And so please approach the podium and provide your name and city of residence and you'll be provided three minutes. If you're within an organization, you will have five.
Yes, we have Shelby Botmiller with Cedar Crest Diamond Club.
All right, Mr. Botmiller.
Hi, thank you for having me. Given my casual appearance, I was at a softball event. We helped on reverse the league night for the softball teams. The high schoolers went out and supported them. It was good fun. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed orientation and alignment of an additional bat and ball field at the Big Rock Expansion. Say bat and ball, not knowing if it's intended for mixed-use softball, baseball or what. But the path of the sun is contrary to prescribed field orientation for bat and ball sports for safety reasons. So I'm speaking, representing the Cedar Crest Diamond Club, which is a 501(c)(3), the license here in Duval, representing the baseball and softball communities feeding into the high school. That before the tax dollars are spent and turf is laid down and lines go along with it, if we could potentially consider reorienting the the positioning of the bases so that the pitcher, catcher, umpire line, we're not directly in line of the setting sun. When I really look at the proposed alignment of the pitcher's mound to home plate, the way the sun sets there at the rock park, it will impact fewer, it will primarily be the pitcher and not the catcher and umpires, the home plate umpire that's affected. But as a player, coach and parent that has the scariest potential orientation of the field, the pitch is going to be coming at the batter, the batter knows too roughly where that pitch is going to go. Should it go to their head, they'll be wearing a helmet. But the pitcher, the exit velocity of that ball will be much higher, much faster. And the pitcher is in a much more vulnerable position, usually unhelmeted, not at all. Pitchers to the pitcher are I think if we rotated the orientation of the field a simple 90 degrees, bring home plate at the southeastern corner. The potentially hopefully simple solution to
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, we have Greg Knappland with Cedar Crest Diamond Club.
Okay, Mr. Knappland.
Hello, Greg Raftern, Duval, Washington. I would like to also speak on a similar issue that Shelby mentioned just a second ago. So I'd like to read a letter to you that I'm going to send to you tomorrow for your review. So again, the subject is related to the urgent safety concerns regarding Big Rock Field Number Three and proposed new field orientation. Again, this is to the city council and there. So I am writing in behalf of the concerned citizens, players and coaches and families to bring urgent attention to the longstanding and well-documented safety issues associated with Field Number Three and Big Rock ballfields. For over a decade, individuals and organizations, including Valley Little League, District Nine Little League Presidents, Redden North Little League, East Lake Little League, Redden West Little League, Redden North Little League, Falls Little League, the numerous left baseball organizations have raised significant concerns about orientation of Field Number Three. Field Number Three is the dirt field you walk into. Just for additional clarification, the current layout positions players directly in the path of the setting sun, causing blind conditions for the batter, catcher and umpire, their dirt field we're talking about. The dangerous alignment has resulted in canceled games, reduced field rentals, lost revenue and most importantly, unsafe conditions for the youth athlete. Numerous incidents have occurred where players and officials have been struck in the face or body because of the impaired visibility. The sun's position during mid to late afternoon, it hazards conditions that undermines the safe environment of game. Alarmingly, the proposed orientation of the new field at Big Rock mirrors the same flawed layout which the sun directly aligns with the pitcher catcher alignment, this time in the pitcher's eyes. Again, intruding upon similar issues that we face in Field Number Three. Best practices in field design typically orient the field so that the sun sets parallel to the first and third base lines, minimizing the risk of blinding sunlight for those on a plane, on the plate or on the mound. This approach is adaptive across countless facilities throughout the region and should be followed up followed as well. We're covering if reorienting Field Number Three is not feasible, we urge the city and explore other safety solutions such as installation of fast-forwarding trees, which was discussed in a previous meeting a couple of years ago. More critically, however, we implore you to not replicate this dangerous condition with the construction of the proposed new field. This issue has been raised repeatedly and shouldn't longer be overlooked. Our community deserves a safe and thoughtful design facility for our young children and families. We ask the city of Duval to take immediate and proactive measures to ensure both the current and future fields prioritize safety and follow the industry's best practice for layout and orientation. Thank you. I just want to say, so as part of this letter, I have put three signatures from leaders of the community and outline communities expressing concerns that vary expressing concerns that vary from the past four Little League presidents around here, including myself, future past VPs of all those boards, current presidents of East Lake Little League, Red and Little League, Falls Little League have expressed interest in this. Umpires, the head coach at Cedar Crest, Joe Lyons, who was also in the board. With this, we also have numerous coaches and parents as a part of the community who have witnessed and seen this firsthand. So again, I implore you to please take this seriously as it relates to the future orientation of the field directly diagonal of the dirt field. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak this evening?
Yep, we have Morgan Henley with Duval.
Certainly, I'll have five minutes.
Five minutes, go. Hello there, the council staff members. Duval and Chief, my name is Morgan Henley. I am the lead role at Duval Days, among any other of that. Some of you may have seen, we released the poster yesterday. So Duval Days is officially in the public. We're super excited about this year. We kind of did a throwback theme because this is the sixty-fifth anniversary of the historic event. So we're branding it Duval Days, D A Z E, like it used to be many years ago. And it kind of has like the sixties feel to the vibe of the poster. We have some amazing acts coming to town. We have one of the best punk bands in Seattle, Funky to Death, is going to be our headliner. We have Johnny Wheels and Swamp Donkeys, which besides being an amazing name, they're an incredible award-winning blues band. We have some local acts, Nick Martin, who is one of the top talents who have ever come from this valley. So very pleased to have the Toulmo School Jazz Band will be opening the main stage. But I'm not here to talk about all that today. I'm here to talk about the grant for the economic development and that we recently turned in. Kim Pereira was our grant writer, and she wrote the grant, but there seems to be a little confusion on our ask and what was in the grant. So I'm here to hopefully clear some of that up. We get asked for thirteen thousand dollars. We, of course, by no means think that you're going to give us that, or we want that full amount. That was just, you know, we're asking how I can, you know, believe, need to be. Last year, I believe we asked for fifteen, and we got around five, definitely came in handy and paid for our sound crew for the main stage, which also benefits Raph because they have their five K run on Friday night. And I think we can all agree in this room that the education fund is extremely important to our community and our youth. So any way we can help them out is a big deal because that's big fundraising for them. One of the things that was, was presented to me about our grant was that we didn't, we weren't talking about anything new. Apparently, this grant was supposed to be for a new part of the event, which is it completely true? I mean, we are still trying to activate Depot Park. Last year, we had some live music in there. That was the first time we'd ever done that at Duval Days. So this year, we would really like to double down on that, try to get more people into the park down there at Depot Park, which then will also benefit all of our vendors down there, which a lot of those vendors are local art vendors. So we were trying for many years now to get that more and more traffic. So we're definitely putting a large emphasis in signage this year, more signage to let people know that hey, there's vendors in here, come stop in for some live music. And the Gals Pride Truck will be there again, which is massively popular. You know, to get them to stop in there before they go on down to the Clement Park. So there is a kind of new vibe that we're trying to bring to the event, and that is Depot Park. We have some, some great bands playing down there, too. We have sponsors, Jeff Warren, he has a local angle called Mysterious Fat Man. And then we also have Sweet and Juicy, which is versus his fruit. So it's going to be a great time down there. That's where we would like to use the grant money provided by the city is to help continue to grow that part of the event, their depot. That's what I'm saying. Of course, we are very thankful for the city and everything that the city already gives to the event via in-kind. This event, of course, without the Public Works Group, which is incredible. Also, chief and his officers play a huge role in this event and the safety of everybody involved. So we definitely don't take that for granted. It's a large amount of money. Anything more that could be allocated for this event, we're definitely all set. And lastly, I will say as somebody that's involved in every town festival from here to North Bend, eight in total, I can tell you there is a downtick this year in sponsorship across the board. Businesses are not, because of our economic turmoil over in and national and in our nation.
Good on yourself. Thanks.
To gather money this year. So again, anything that you can, I'll get towards this event. It's much appreciated.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passed. With that, we'll move on to scheduled items. First up is the mayor's report. First item, the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Steering Committee had our final meeting of the session today. You heard much of what we discussed actually from our lobbyists today. I am very honored to have had a part in the moving forward of the Recycling Reform Act, which will, on behalf of the Association of Washington Cities, which will transform the recycling industry in Washington State and make recycling free to all Washingtonians, as well as fund the infrastructure for that through producer responsibility organization. Companies are already making their packaging in other countries using the standards. And so we do not expect any cost increases on consumers. However, in the future, your recycling bills will go down, which is a really big plus, as well as the material going to the landfill and less material being produced overall will have significant economic benefit for all of this. That's been an item that's been on AJWC's agenda for several years now, so it's really great to be a part of that. Also, to share that I testified on behalf of the Association of Washington Cities weekend before last for the House Appropriation Committee on the original property tax increase proposal. As you heard tonight, there are new bachelor proposals that are coming forward either this evening or tomorrow. There is a hearing tomorrow evening. I've been asked to testify in my role as president of Association of Washington Cities on that tomorrow evening, and I will be doing that. I was encouraged to hear potential momentum, especially for the specification of funding for public safety. That is something that the legislature has been grappling with for several years. And the reality has hit that we have fewer police officers per capita in Washington State than any other state in the country, and it is impacting us significantly. It's impacting recruiting, it's impacting our ability to keep officers, it's impacting officers' abilities, especially in larger jurisdictions to prosecute and take care of crime. So any way that we can get some additional dedicated funding to support our, our police department is more than welcome, especially as we look at having such a small portion of our city's general fund accessible to do that funding. That is a kind of it on the legislative side. And so I know, I'm sure Council Mayor Tom Mercer will report on the Public Issues Committee, but lots going on there as well. So with that, that concludes my report this evening. And I'll turn it over to the city administrator for her.
Thank you. All right, I think, well, good evening again, city administrator. We'll start with the public works report. And turn it over to Director Lynn Schuss.
Good evening, everyone. The afternoon council mayor, people that you call work. Homework activities for you, sorry, well, I'm not sure I need to speak yet. The two new maintenance staff start tomorrow. One member does live in Duval, the other lives in Carriage, and so we are excited for that as new maintenance ones. Home Works and the treatment plant have been selected by our insurance carrier, WCA, to have a safety audit at the wastewater treatment plants. Picture is of the aerial image there. So they'll come in next week and want site, and they have information they'd like to review upfront, and then they'll do some review on site, and then they'll send us some information and how to just be safer if that's possible, which I'm sure it would be, but that's something our department gets this year instead of others. And we are, I think I may have mentioned it for sure already, but the days this weekend staff have been working out for quite a while, getting prepared. Giveaways, activities for kids, it's a whole, whole booked booth of event at Depot Park, sorry. That's happening, and then we're also getting the Dory Farm ready for the Easter egg hunt. That will be hosted this year by a new host, the Duval Historical Society. They'll be up at Dory Farm. And then it's Saturday as well, so Saturday has lots of activities for you in Duval. Next slide. There you go, same thing, next slide. Just to update per the new public purchase policy, we did cancel and reject all bids for the overlay project. There were several bidding errors, and we figured since it was more fair to do a rebid than try to wade through errors, we are rebidding that at this time. None of the, I guess, bidding contractors were overly worked up about it because it is a fair way to approach it. Older technologies, smaller agency, or some companies that may or may not have signatories that are dictated per our planning requirements. So clean that up and then it's re-advertised and we'll open on the twenty-third. Same bidding projects, overlays. Council discussion at last meeting, I brought forward a battery duty sound energy system that we were we were presented or proposed some questions to. We discussed not having any interest in Dory Farm, but there were a few follow-up question. Regardless of any other places, so. And two were how would these battery cells work at Duval? And how demand events would Duval be served better than it is now? I'm kind of surmising the questions, and then would we get local that bit? So they're really good. We do have other parcels off Big Rock specifically. These lines need, well, these systems have to be off major transmission lines, three-phase lines. So like, if you don't know, Old Town's a lot of single-phase, it wouldn't work there. But anywhere where there are three lines above a single major line on power poles that you see above ground that are transmission carrying high enough for them are interested in. So off of Big Rock Road, any of the parcels they're interested in. So yes, but the questions like the systems store energy, and they do buffer high demand or low demand. So they store a little demand and can get out energy high demand to do buffer that system. And yes, if there's a way that they could be used to back feed the community and the battery backup and a power outage that didn't, you know, affect safety in their transmission system, they can do that. So I thought it was, actually it was a pretty clear and quick response from them. So I don't think we need to do anything at this time. As councilor said, don't bother, but let's say if we have a two to five acre site where we're going to put a homework yard and they need ten thousand square feet, and we'd like to consider renting that to them if we can fit in. They still will do some legwork. There's nothing guaranteed here, but them carrying on some review activities on our parcels that would be off Big Rock, then they are more than happy to do so. And again, any changes or updated information I can bring back in a future meeting. Questions on that topic in specific?
I'll just ask if there's any objections to just further exploration. Councilmember Naflin, may I ask a question?
Do you know if they can be used that way? Is that the intent of why they are installed? Who will be used that way?
I mean, in fairness, they didn't ask their specific intent for having these, but they are trying to buffer their systems capacities because they can't, it's easier to add these things from what I learned than more lines, more transformers. And that's the kind of way that they're going.
I would just add that in order for us to have a negotiation with them, we have to have more information. And we can, the city has the power and the authority to not rent out that site if there is a site is chosen, if we do not see benefits through contract. So that would be the place to negotiate and have those discussions once they decide that there's a feasible site.
Do we know if it makes any like buzzing noise or anything?
I don't know any of that. We can certainly ask more information. A nice hum or a glow or even heat in it, it's like, I don't know. But yeah, I did notice several other sites I looked at, and this is just one button image. They do burn up around them, so they can be at least visually kind of screened at grade. If you're above them, you're going to see into them, but still, there's options. I'm not even sure we could fit them on a site for a new yard once we get all the things in it, if we get to move forward with that. So, but again, just the option was asked of us to see if they are interested, and there you go.
Okay, I don't know if that's a question. I just kind of had a question, so thank you. All right, anyone else? Go ahead, councilmember.
Your question about public safety, I mean, I know there's concern living near power lines. I would have a similar question about this. Next slide, is that last slide or more? And then just bringing to folks' attention, if you did or did not hear, the Department of Ecology, State Action has issued a drought advisory for our area where the light kind of mustard color. The advisory declaration, sorry, not advisory, but actual declaration on the, on the east side of the mountains and the two orange counties. So what the advisor means on our side is things are trending in a way that could lead to drought. We are setting the capacity of our rainfall through the year.
Hold on just a second so I can get that. Should be okay. It's not, I guess I can't do both. I was trying to look at both screens so it's easier to read.
So no worries. So yeah, there's a handful of cautionary advisory, like data points that they used to issue this. So we're not in a, you know, we're not in any sort of pickle yet in the bottom left corner. We don't have an narrative, but yeah, water supply is fine. Snowpack is a little low. We are, they are going to adjust their storage levels at this time, at least for SPU, which is who we get our wholesale water purchase through. And then they'll be, you know, watching things as we go. We're at seventy-five percent of normal, so not bad, but not great. And homeworks, any other questions?
Right, next slide. I'll turn it over to Director Thomas.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers of the staff. So we've been focusing on our portion of the open house on this weekend. And so please come down if you're visiting to get some trees or do activities in the depot building. Lanning will be there for the comp plan update and then also for our accessory dwelling unit update. So over on the left is one of the images that we have created. So those are all ADUs that are within the city of Duval. We have less than ten, which we talked about a little bit at the last meeting. So up on the left-hand side, you can see that that one is detached. It's fairly large, it's probably one of our largest ADUs. And then down the bottom, that's in our older part of town. And the small building on the left-hand side is a detached unit. And it is one story on the roadside, but it's two stories on the downhill side. And then the one on the right-hand side top is a house that was constructed about a decade ago, and then has a detached garage, and at that time, they also built an ADU above the garage. And then the below image goes up really with the yellow home, and you can see they have a pathway that goes up there. So we have created our FAQ sheet. It is going up, actually, it's on our website now. And then we're going to do a community engagement exercise, which is kind of like a sticker exercise, plus have some information. And a social media post goes out tomorrow that'll link everybody to these. Um and a social media post goes out tomorrow that'll link everybody to these documents. And on the right-hand side, that is basically our FAQ, that's also part of our webpage update. So next slide. And just in case you wanted to see where they were located, we did a little snapshot. And so you can see what parts of town they were in, next slide. And so this one is in an older part of town, larger lot development, that seems to be a trend for the most part, and is there on some of our larger lots. Next slide. Uh this is the one that's in Old Town, this one's, you know, a much tighter lot and it has a alley adjacent to it, you can see it's close to the lake. And you can see the design compatibility is very similar between the primary or principal home and the ADU. Next slide. Uh look at that, we are working on preparing for the comp plan, it is all hands on deck, including thanks to Public Works. Um they're putting up with us kind of creating a mess on all floors right now to put together all of our materials uh for the community. Slide. So we are preparing now for uh the ADU and sign code to go to hearing next month. Uh we have completed both policies now at Planning Commission for their first review, but they'll go back um one more time before hearing. And then Planning Commission will make a recommendation on the transportation plan at the next meeting, they held their public hearing uh last week and you will hold yours this evening. Um our uh public hearings for the ADU and sign are scheduled for May fourteenth and May twentieth. Uh we have uh essentially until the end of the uh month of June to get it approved because it becomes effective um under statute at that time. So items that are coming up are the fire district, and so Quamie, water shed forum, their ILAs that we're working on, those will start to come forward in, in June, and then we just started our parking policy update and we're working on two RFPs, one for design guidelines and one for FAO, and those will be coming to future meeting as a written report. I think that is the end.
Yeah. Uh question for Dr. Tom.
Being nice, we can move on to the next one. So we are um starting to issue our uh materials to help the community see all of the things that are going on for spring and summer, so this is our one-page flyer. That will be with the summer events guide, that's gonna go live on the website in the next couple of days as soon as uh Rita, our community events coordinator comes back from vacation. Um and this I just will be the back page of it, so if people print it out, they'll have a one-pager for all the summer events and then on the website it's gonna be, it's in kind of a booklet form, they'll go page by page per month. Um it's very cute, uh so more to come on that, but why don't you just give you a taste of what's to come. Next slide. Um just a couple other uh updates from me, so I did email, I think yesterday, uh City Council, the RFP rate sheets for the North Bend Police Services RFP that they issued. Um so they got two proposals, they got one from Stone Quamie, one from the King County Sheriff's Office, I just gave you all the rate sheet. But if you're more curious about the full proposals that they received, uh they're in North Bend Council Packet for the four fifteen meeting and they're up online. Um on April twenty-eighth, I will be attending a webinar regarding the Comcast Rise Grant Program. It has three million dollars grants to support small businesses and entrepreneurs in King County. The application period for that is May one through thirty-one, so learning a little more about that and uh how our small businesses and entrepreneurs might be able to benefit from that program, so more to come. I'm excited to learn about it though. Uh as part of my work from the St. Quamie Valley Washington Board of Tourism Program that happened, I'm on the Planning Committee for the St. Quamie Valley Tourism Heritage Trail. Which is, it's gonna be kind of an augmentation of the Sabers and Quamie Project. Which will promote an entire tourism and economic development approach to the trail. So as they're currently imagining it, um it'll be a digital map and you'll be able to pop onto a city and it'll kind of toggle where um with kind of small circles where you'll pop it open and it'll have all the heritage sites. You'll pop it open and it'll have all the recreation sites. Um our, you know, places to eat, places to rest, and so it's a big project, um. It's funded through part of this tourism board effort. And uh me, the St. Quamie Valley uh Rail Museum, there's about seven or eight of us on. Um I'm also attending the St. Quamie Valley Destination Leadership Meeting, I'm four twenty-eight, so I'm on the board now or the destination leadership team, I, I don't know exactly how they're framing the title of all this, but um that for that larger kind of um St. Quamie Valley Chamber Project on creating a brand and the destination management organization for the entire St. Quamie Valley. So a couple activities with that work. Um we, so it'll start with an audit of the wastewater treatment plant. But our annual audit for WCA uh usually happens in May. And it focuses on public works, so apologies to Stephen Experimal. Getting started right away and um that'll be the, the source of our attention for our WCA audit. And finally, we've scheduled a day, uh it'll be July seventeen. A film crew is coming to Duval to film our sixty-seven, sixty-second video. The council like uh council member McHenry went for, from the NLC. Um they sent me a script today and filming location. Uh there, it, it is quite the elaborate thing and it's great, we don't have to do it. Uh but it, they sent me a couple samples of their videos that they've done in different municipalities and they're beautiful and it's gonna be a really positive experience and they kind of have asked me to outline uh you know, a staff member or two, um they're really interested in having a country appear in front of the historical um property, they would like a council member, they could mayor. Um some more to come on who feels like their camera ready to be on the promotional video for Duval, but I'm excited that they're coming there. Next slide. Okay, so I have a couple grants to talk about. So this is the season, we applied for a bunch of grants back in February and March on different items. Uh but now council member Perry's grant uh is open. The Port of Seattle's grant is open, both of those are due by the end of April. The King County Youth and Amateur Sports Grant is due May fifth. Still working out, getting all of the details and the budget for that, but we have a concept and we're ready to put in that rent proposal for uh the um kind of design process and construction of a mountain bike park in our open space. So these are too specific that are really around tourism. Uh bringing people together here in Duval, so wanted to cover tonight what I've kind of thought up in my brain of things that we can do to uh meet the grant requirements. So the first council member Perry has four grants open. Um there's a five, so community service grants, veteran service grants, local solutions grants, which are really about housing stability, behavioral health, um food security, a lot of nonprofits apply for that grant and so it's most of our um human services providers that access that um grant. Cool, get active, stay active, and then food security, so. I focused on the get active, stay active, um I found this thing from Lakeland, Florida, which I just thought was adorable. And built um our grant, our proposed grant proposal that I'm offering to you all tonight. Um kind of based on what I found there, so next slide. So it has five components. Um one thing we found is having our own stuff matters. Um if we have our own equipment, our own um things that we have here in the city, we can run events far more smoothly. And so we don't have to rent and we don't have to find continued funding for some of these events if we own our own equipment. So the first is investing in equipment for Regler's Splash and Water Day at Big Rock. So um the, those kinds of things that we would buy for that, I found a giraffe sprinkler. Um it's like six feet tall, the couple of those as you walk into Big Rock and giraffes bring you. Um a couple of the bucket things, um the fire department, assuming they don't have a huge fire emergency have committed to bringing their truck to Big Rock to do a splash day with us in August. Um the kind of things that you scan on that replicate a splash park um or splash pad. And then uh a couple, a couple other water toys. And then I just found some uh examples of other cities that have done it, just wanted to kind of show you what my mind was thinking of when I put together this element of it. Um down below, I put this in about what we can't do, I cannot buy a water slide, our uh insurer said no. So we could rent a water slide and shift the liability to a vendor, but I did ask about uh including in the ground or our side. It was a, it was a hard note. Uh next slide. The second element would be investment in equipment for uh regular Family Fun Friday or games at the visitor center, so as I'm conceiving this along, I didn't even have, wasn't even in it. Along with the Port of Seattle grant, the idea is to activate this space here. Um so a lot of evenings tonight included. Um there are very few parks that park down here, but we have this space that if we activated it, we could get people down to Main Street buying ice cream, having dinner if we offered something here for people to do. And so the second element of the grant idea for the council member Perry grant is to do one of those um like a game night at the visitor center, game night in the backyard, I'll figure out something catchy or um John or Rita, who always have really catchy ideas, will figure it out for me. Um but having something back here that we just host regularly, maybe a couple times a month for people and families to get out and do games um here in the back visitor center. That element number two. Element number three is to buy a whole bunch of cornholes. And there are a bunch of places that do cornhole tournaments. The idea would be uh over time to partner with the Chamber and Rotary to do kind of a more organized contest, but in the meantime, it would be part of the family game night. Um the wooden uh game there are official um American Association of Cornhole, Cornhole Association, whatever the, the association is. Um my thought would be that we would um find a connection with the community to paint them and have them part of kind of a Duval brand and uh community night to paint the cornholes and then they would be part of family game night. Um so other cities do cornhole tournaments, feel a lot, I'm thinking fall as a fall family activity. Slide. Then we really need audio equipment, so for anybody who's been to a ribbon cutting, um we have this really old kind of portable karaoke thing that is not great for city events. It uh projects almost nothing. So getting, investing in some audio equipment for us to have so that we can have music and we can have speeches or using the microphone at some of these um events that we have here in the city. Uh next. And the final element of the get active, stay active grant would be to get, they have these um dance floors, they're kind of this like spongy stuff um to do uh dance nights in the backyard. It squarely fits the definition of how other cities have used this pool of money to do things that are encouraging kind of outdoor activity and family activities, and again, to activate this space back here for small kind of dance parties. Also would mean we could hire some of our local um dance companies, we have a lot of them, we have a lot of talented people here to do line dancing in a night or something, but. And then I think that's it for the Sarah Perry grant. Yes. So the Port of Seattle is pivoting. What they're looking for is less this year around single-time special events that aren't sustainable, because the way the Port of Seattle grant works is it has to be a new idea every year. And it's starting to become a little bit of an issue because we throw this great event like last year, the train event, the community really likes it, but we can't fund it with Port of Seattle grant money because it has to be new every year, and so we kind of create these events, people really like them and then we can't sustain. And I think the Port of Seattle have kind of fought on to that concern, and so they're looking for grants this year that are literally they're going to like activate a space activate opportunities for small businesses to engage with their communities, so. This kind of pairs with a council member Perry grant, which is to again kind of activate this space for more use. Um so next slide, so, oh sorry, go back. So this is current, I went out the other day and took a bunch of pictures. Um next slide. So the first element would be to update this alley back here. Add some lighting, um some uh better uh vegetation so that it can be kind of a garden space back there that people will want to find and enjoy. Slide. So we have two things that are currently budgeted in the um the biennial art plan that will activate this space already, so that we have a mural project with stairs right here. As well as the book bench redesign, and so the idea would be to tuck the book bench down here after we get the stairs painted so the kind of height and find for the community and the history library, so it's kind of the perfect place to tuck there. Uh so that's kind of the alley concept, investing in that alley to have it be a place for the community to find and experience. Um next slide. And the second is to clean up the patio and do small parking lot activation. So um I put another slide of line dancing, but I'm really invested in this line dancing. Um and but the, you know, activating for those big um games and there's the one in the corner in the bottom right with kind of a miniature library um for people to come out and enjoy books together. And then the one on top, you see those red tables, but to the side, they had kind of like an ice cream cart and they were doing, this was in Washington DC. They were taking parallel parking stalls and activating them in small um kind of food pop-ups. Next slide. So to kind of bring that home, the things we would need to invest in would be some outdoor tables and chairs. And then um down here on the patio, a couple um for game nights, um seating. Cause right now there's no seating on that patio to go out and enjoy, um so I found these um uh park benches that can be put there. Um the cultural commission last night, we were talking about this idea of outdoor game night, they were excited about it, they said, well, if it's successful, can we think about you know, indoor board games, I think that would be when we would want to pair with the library, it's there to go model for doing it. Uh but you know, just trying to make this space be a destination because we have it, it's beautiful if we make more room. And I think that is it, any questions?
Councilmember McHenry?
Not really, quite, well, a little bit of a question, um some of your pictures reminded me of Redmond Town Center and how they have all those games out there. Um is there, are you mostly thinking, it sounded like you were mostly thinking of having things that you could put out and then take in but there were some elements that looked maybe semi-permanently. I couldn't tell if that one was painted checkerboard on the ground or if it was like a mat or something like that. Do you have any thoughts on any potential semi-permanent type things?
So outside of the um the, so I kind of thought about that, like what are things we can have permanently that people will go use, and so those park benches are things if you had like a checker set that you could yourself come down and use this space, because it's always open, I mean, there's no restriction for people using the patio, just I've never seen anyone use a patio. Um I would not plan to put anything permanent here, it would be stuff that we would take out for an event and bring back in. Um just because this space, there are times where we want those parking spaces to be available to the community.
Councilmember Athan?
Yeah, these ideas are just super exciting and I am glad you brought them to us. My one question is relate to, it sounds like the grants would cover purchasing of items. Um all of these events will take staff time. What is your plan for that? I know when we added a community event, so there's kind of the idea, oh, we will get grants to cover some of the costs. Boy, but it seems like a lot of the grants we're getting are just covering the event costs that are not necessarily uh reimbursing staff time, but maybe I'm misunderstanding, is there a component in these that are our own staff time costs, um and then how do we? Um, and then how do we plan to, you know, create events and use these things into the future? If you don't plan out that.
So for most of these, it would be, uh, the community events coordinator or one of the summer helpers. Unless we do something in the winter, which we would partner with, involve fewer organizations to make that available. Uh, so I have not designed these requests to have cost recovery for Rita. Um, cause Rita now is a full-time employee who's an exempt employee who doesn't get paid overtime. So, um, she is, would be responsible for doing most of these events. I mean, honestly, a lot of it would be, um, with the exempt staff helping out some of these events. And then the summer helpers who work on the weekends. Um, probably have to be a little bit of schedule adjusting, but no. The Port of Seattle grant particularly is intended to help small businesses in an activated space. So it's not really designed to get staff recovery, though there's a component of the Port of Seattle grant every year that we can get recovery for staff or for staff time. So the train event and movie event, um, cover the cost of staff for them. So there is some of it, but I haven't as a line item said, um, I want to use this money to pay for portion of re-disassembling on how I design them because I want to get the full benefit of activating this space and getting the things as opposed to getting the cost recovery for staff, though again, the Port of Seattle grant allows it. Um, the other thing I would say is, um, we've kind of tested this with the stage. You know, we have a stage and we, it has made holding events that are kind of either impromptu or quickly planned really, really easy. Um, so that's kind of the thought behind it is replicating the success we've had with having our own stage.
All right. Um, does anyone else have any questions before we go back to councilmember Nethland? Saying that, councilmember Nethland, and then that'll be the last question.
For acquiring items and we're talking about maybe community organization, have a loan program to other community organizations. So for example, you'll, um, screen. Probably not, you have some kind of relationship or relationship with them do that since it might be a community asset.
We have a process for that little stage. We don't have very many people take us up on it. Um, but we would probably, if we had an asset like the audio equipment or, um, we didn't apply for a grant, haven't heard yet about getting movie equipment, but we would treat it the same as the stage. That if somebody wanted to rent it or use it, that we would, you know, agree. Yeah. The, the thing with the stage is most people want it in summer and we block it off in the summer. So.
Okay. So I have a question about another item. It was the police services information that you gave us. And thank you for providing it. Super interesting. Um, one thing I, when I was just kind of comparing how much we spent and what their proposals were, I noticed that our police department, um, in the budget, it's just the actual staff that are police staff. And it doesn't include any staff time that is more administrative overhead. So, you know, um, time, uh, finance, you know, some of the other time allocations, maybe even public works to maintain the building, you know, all of those different staff time allocations. I think there are components to charge, um, the, the cost of the actual building may, um, maintain it more of the capital. Essentially, but I, I don't see that sort of overarching administrative staff, um, fly to the cost in the line for the Department of Police. Is that something that we can get estimated? I'm just, it's, that's something that I saw in the, um, the responses to the, we, you know, showed that there was an administrative overhead cost. And I, and that's something that I don't even know what are.
Uh, I would say this is one where council as a whole would like that worked in. I would want to take direction is, uh, consensus among council.
Yeah. Um, sorry, go ahead. Uh, my name is Dr. Richmond.
Please, currently have a plan to distribute administrative overhead? And it is part of our, um, upcoming one? Oh, no, it's been a part of every budget for the past several years and it are, um, part of the budget.
I don't see where, I only see when I look at staff splits, I just see direct police officers applied. But I, all of the administrative to the general fund seems to kind of lump together to the sub departments and not specify exactly what would be needed to include, if that makes sense.
So in the police budget, there is a transfer to general fund for administrative overhead.
For to that whole time.
We are, I'm making some corrections to our objectives. Just trying to make it more clear that that is for administrative charges to adjust. This would be, um, fighting with staff time, this, yeah.
And just a quick reminder, go ahead, my name is Dr. Richmond.
I would make a point that that administrative is for the services applied and type of support. Our salaries are directly split based on amount of time staff work on each type of activity. So it's split to our various funds at the payroll process level.
Right. Thank you, Finance Director Richmond. And I just want to remind everyone, um, our, our rules. Councilmembers should not speak more than once on a particular subject until every other council member has had the opportunity to speak, um, and council members are encouraged to discuss items during the decision-making process. So, um, does anybody else have anything else they'd like to ask the city administrator? Right. Saying that, we will go ahead and move on over to the remainder of our agenda, uh, if you're completely prepared. I am. That was it. Perfect. All right. And now we'll move on to city council report. Uh, does any council member have any reports on meetings you'd like to participate in, share? Go ahead, councilmember.
Just a reminder for anyone who attended the, uh, NLC Congressional City Congress. I always mix up the three Cs, but you know, the congressional conference, the early or the discount for attending that. If you're going to the city summit in November, I think is good until just Friday. So just a heads up on that. I am leaning toward attending because I'm on the small city council and that's when one of their meetings is happening. Um, and then lastly, it's sort of related, but I just wanted to let you know that, uh, troop seven, four, five had a bunch of scouts down at former compared, picking up trash last night and they picked up a lot. So, um, it was just a fun little event and taking advantage of the good weather. Nice to be a fun little cleanup topic.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor President Mercer?
So two quick updates. One I should have brought up, but, um, get out of the order, but was, um, councilor. So I think the clerks sent out two dates. We kind of got a split. Um, I don't know if there was more preference or availability. I think the one issue that's come up with the tent is it's also the city pride event that weekend. So ideally, uh, there were sort of leaning toward the 24th. I know not everyone's, or again, it was preferred or not optional. I wasn't sure Carol, if you were specifically, because I know you mentioned the 10th as well. But, um, if you could sort of revisit that, we want to lock that date in, but I would prefer not to have to sort of juggle staff time, even though it's primarily a council events and we're in different locations. This building's been used for that event. So, um, beyond a different location, it just, if we need any type of supportive services, it's sort of split resources. So that was kind of number one. The other one was just a quick pick update. Um, this particular month's pick meeting had a number of agenda items that didn't really necessarily relate to the, the city. There was, um, appointment updates. There was a legislative update that overlapped with what our lobbyists provided. Uh, there was a wastewater, we were not within, uh, King County. And, and then some sort of housekeeping items. I think the main one that, that we revisited was an update on the parks levy. Uh, King County is actually voting on that tonight and adopting the language of the levy. Um, there were, and you know, I assume it was already happened. Um, the, uh, SCA made some recommendations. We had some specific access at city level, which didn't kind of come through, I think, because of the, how the tightness of the, the time schedule. But the two committees within SCA met and they managed to push through a couple of updates. Um, and I was just going to sort of relate them. Uh, here, obviously we have King County coming at the next meeting, so there's an opportunity to ask them questions. But they, um, did, uh, adjust the levy rate itself. They did some allocation funding to multiple projects, again tweaking adjustments. And then they made some adjustments to the formula. There are specifics, obviously the King County, the, the levy, uh, language itself goes into more specifics. I think the, the two other ones that, or the, that I just wanted to, that I thought were a win for us, not necessarily this time, although we can obviously revisit it with council, uh, in terms of, but, you know, for projects that aren't executed to return that fund, they make it available to jurisdictions that, that are underserved. So I think that sort of addressed Duval. The other piece was around, um, asking that when projects are executed, their funds are allocated, that they report out at a code level. So we'll have a better way to track in the future what's being allocated here within the valley, which has been a little hard right now to figure out where specific funds are being allocated. So again, that was, I think, the main one I wanted to sort of revisit, um, for this meeting. And again, I, you know, urge folks, if you have questions, um, points, points of view in terms of what we're getting out of this levy and how we're planning to sell it to our constituents. Um, we have that opportunity next month to give us there.
Great. Thanks, Mayor President. Uh, councilmember McHenry, I just wanted to know if Mayor President wanted, did you want a quick question of who is available for that day? Well, you have a question.
It's a part of the opportunity to, to just go around.
Put everyone on the spot, whatever, you know, the stuff.
And maybe the easiest way is, you know, availability on the 24th. Are you available on the, on the 24th? Can I get to a straw?
Yeah, well, these are fine for me.
I'm available, though. At least I need someone personally to follow it. Well, I think he responded initially to the.
I think he did. Yeah. I was trying to pull it up before we met. I thought he had available. No, kind of a pick or choose. So it sounds like.
May time would be worse.
All right. So it sounded like we had a consensus, uh, May 24th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to presentations, we have review the economic development tourism grants applications, uh, led by city administrator McDowell.
Um, good evening. So I did not put this on for an agenda bill to, uh, vote tonight. Plan is to bring it next week. Um, because I think there were some remaining questions you heard from one of the applicants tonight. So I put more of, uh, what the committee received, um, some different ideas. I did some work between when the subcommittee met and tonight on learning more about the, what the grants, um, had hoped to achieve. So did a slide deck on that. Uh, just as a reminder that whatever council approves for these economic development grants requires a budget amendment. So currently there is no money in the budget for these economic development tourism grants. So it will require a budget amendment to fund any of these ideas. And that budget amendment, um, will come from the general fund and let the council wants to take it from the strategic fund, which is ultimately a general fund. So. Um, all right. So most of this was in your packet. I did update some information. So the first was from the Duval Foundation for the Arts. Um, they asked for a Sam Blatt support. Their amount requested was 2,500. Um, I got more understanding of what they, um, were hoping to use that 2,500 for. So permits and stage rental, uh, mark, those are banners. And then pillow chairs, tables, tents, sound equipment. That's largely what they, uh, applied for last year and what they got last year in terms of support for their event. But so the subcommittee had asked for some of these special events that, uh, we spent a little bit of time and I want to, these are really rough estimates. For me to do kind of a forensic dive and actually calculate to a certain degree on the cost of in-kind support would have been really difficult. So these are very general. Um, so for Sam Blatt's public, uh, works crew time is about 2,600. It's largely staff fire summer helpers who are already on four 10s from Friday to Monday. Um, but we have a little bit of pre-work that we do that is, um, time over time and a little bit of work we do at the end, uh, to clean up that is beyond staffing of our summer helpers. Event management, a little bit of money around Lou doing emergency, um, review of the, you know, emergency plan for the special event. Rita will be on site. She helps with the permit and just making sure that everything's flowing well. Um, for, uh, Sam Blatt, I do all, almost nothing. Finance department will issue a couple invoices. So fairly low investment of $500 for event management. Community development, the permit review, 300. Police department estimated about 300. Uh, the port potty costs are 600. And then we provide just miscellaneous stage generator, city-owned property for the event. And then in this case, they want, uh, banner permit and special event permit waivers, which if, uh, as part of their 2,500, so that would be more in kind. Request for 2,500. And slide. So the Duval Farmers Market, um, apologies, since it's smaller than, uh, I can read and I don't have my glasses. And my laptop is dead. Um, so the Duval Farmers Market really, um, I think approached the ask with the spirit and intent that we opened this program for this year. So the website and our social media promotion of economic development and tourism grants this year really said, bring us your new unique ideas. Bring us ideas that if we see them, the event will be made, you know, better, you'll draw more people. And so that's really what we were looking for, given that we had, um, you know, no budget for this. So Farmers Market came up with a bunch of really great ideas. Um. Okay, see what the numbers are on this. Um, okay. So they asked for, sorry, Lord.
It's okay.
Uh, 4489. Last year they got, um, I think close to $5,000, which they came to the city council and I think gave a nice presentation on how the investment from city council last year really explained of Farmers Market. So their plan for this year, they would like feathered flags, um, for the event. Uh, in-kind overhead, um, for the banner fee. They have a meet me at the market campaign, which are these, um, postcards to have people meet up and have dinner and stuff at the Farmers Market. Um, updated A-frames and then this kids buck program for $2,500 to get kids little tokens or coupons to buy fresh fruits and vegetables and food at the Farmers Market. So they have some new ideas to bring new folks into the Farmers Market. So there, that's their ask. Next slide. And then again, everything else is a small, so historical society is real small. Um, but I can summarize theirs. So, um, we did put in a grant, um, for the Duval Historical Society, which we've been tentatively awarded. Um, we cannot advertise it, cannot talk much about it because it's a federal grant or everybody's kind of laying low on the federal grants. Um, but should it be awarded, um, like, let me hit the bank account. Um, it is for a heritage festival and a marketing thing that, um, will have kind of a map that shows our historical sites and our agricultural sites that we can, um, give to the community to support our local farms and our heritage sites. So the Historical Society put in a grant for a very similar program. Uh, the subcommittee suggested that, um, about half of it is things that couldn't be covered by that other grant if we get the money for. So funding the other half of the request for, um, this list of things. So the recommendation with five eighty, um, said, uh, the next, one of the next slides will show the recommended amount from the subcommittee. So next slide. So Duval Day. So, um, I met with Morgan last week to talk about the app. So the original ask was for sound 3661, main stage bands of 8,000. And then that second music area down at Depot Park for 1,500. So I did meet with him last week and he suggested that they would, um, be amenable to dropping their requests down for the two things that are highlighted, which as you heard Morgan talk about tonight, they think will really bring, um, you know, more attention to some of the different areas of the Duval Days Festival. Uh, so that's kind of the amended ask. Last year they received 5,000, um, in, uh, from city council. And then next slide. Okay, so we do a lot to support Duval Day. Um so public works times includes engineer management, about thirteen thousand dollars. Uh general event manager is about twenty five hundred. Um Lu spends a day, redespends a day. We have a pretty significant emergency response footprint for it. Um I didn't do anything with Duval Days last year. The first year I was here, I attended every one of their meetings. Um finance department had some invoices that they have to process. Um so even without my time, you know, the kind of event management side of it is costly. Rita attends a lot of meetings with them. Um community development, the permit review, police department is about ten thousand dollars. Uh we bring the national, from National Barricade, barricades for it. The port potties are already in the budget at five thousand, and then just the miscellaneous costs um that we haven't stopped. There's no real cost to, but some cities will, um they try for full cost recovery. We don't do that with our nonprofit. But um they have some miscellaneous costs there. And slide. Uh Y M C A, I didn't ask for a grant per se, but asked for waivers of um some of their fees. So the Beacon Building, their ask was to waive the rental fee, the damage fee, special event permit fee, banner permit. And we've heard the eighty twenty piece split. Uh next slide. Um okay, so subcommittee recommendations. So sand blasts, it still requires some council discussion because we had payments and components. Um but now we understand what the twenty five hundred will go for. Uh farmers market fully funding their ask, the Duval Historical Society partially funding it because, again, we have a grant that will cover some of it. Um Duval Days, this slide I put together before I met with, um, well, the recommendation from the committee was fifteen hundred. That makes things back there, you know, uh to send this discussion. And then Y M C A fee waivers um for all of the damage deposit. And then there was a request from the subcommittee to talk to the Y to request reduced fees for Duval residents, and they've agreed to that. Um only charging the um member pricing to Duval residents. And that, any questions? Uh the next step will be after council discussion tonight to kind of put together a final package and agenda bill and likely put it on for next, for next meeting.
Uh Councilmember Kuphal, then McHenry.
How much do we spend?
Oh, this total?
Yeah.
Thirty nine thousand.
Yeah, I just wanted to, since I'm on the subcommittee, say a few things about um some of the different ones. Um and firstly, acknowledge that since we had no money budgeted for this, I can only speak for myself, but I feel like perhaps maybe we came into this with a very conservative mindset. So if it, if the recommendations come off harsh, it's not a reflection on the organizations or the requests at all. It was just acknowledgement that we did not budget money for this. So we were trying to be very aware of that. Hmm. And um I think my only notes that I also just wanted to call out, the Duval Farmer's Market one is really exciting. I loved their ideas. Um I think my only note with them and also this historical society is they look into bulk postage because I think their estimates for that are, they should be getting bulk postage discounts with nonprofits with the post office. And I just know that from a long time ago that I dealt with that. Um. The Duval Days one, again, the other, we were still um, I think, looking through the mindset of um last year, looking for kind of new additions, feed money to help something. And sometimes it can be, the payout may not be there. So for these nonprofits, the risk is too high for them to try something. You know, it's hard to sink a lot of money into something. So we were sort of looking more at how can we help them expand? Maybe I didn't, I mean, I'm interested in hearing more about the sound for the restaurant in Duval Day. I'm trying to remember because I know we met right before, I love for spring breaks, my mind's kind of, I'm struggling to remember that. I know the Main Street uh community stage bands was exciting because traditionally that was only just um locals who wanted to come on or maybe people from, you know, the Performing Arts Center or something like that. And so this is actually getting some act to come on there. Um the sound, I guess I was thinking, is the sound, is it a one-time cost for equipment that they're not missing? Or is it, this is, they're paying for the sound every year? So I, I think we were shying away a bit more from recurring pods and trying to go for more one-time things. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. One-time things. Um and then acknowledging how much money goes into some of these already. So I think those are just some of my notes that I had. Um we were just trying to come in very conservatively, like I said. Um so it was not a reflection at all of any of the organizations' requests. Uh we love all these events and all these organizations.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson? Yeah, I was also in the tough meeting. It was, it was really fun to review these. And also, I, it, it felt a little bit harsh that we were trying to be conservative, but really, you know, our general fund has a pretty significant benefit. And, you know, um we're struggling, including the city, and sometimes you have to make hard decisions. And it doesn't reflect um a lack of support for any of these groups or organizations that all along here and everyone that puts these things on. Um so I, I think Councilmember McHenry really covered a lot of where we were coming from. And the one thing that we talked about, I don't know that we fully established, but where will we get this funding? Because we don't have it funded. And for me, I always consider the um the strategic fund is kind of a one-time money usage type fund where you use this money, it's one-time money from construction, which is going to dry up. Um and the, the idea is that you use that money for if you guys have. The goal, the goal, that it will help our businesses, which in turn will generate more sales tax, just uh. So anyway, that's the, and so for me, I would rather uh, what if you decide to fund the, pull the money from the strategic fund since that money really is um identified as one-time money and specified that it shouldn't be used for more one-time things. So, and I just also hope that um, you know, these organizations, organizations do recognize the in-kind support that we provide. So thank you so much for putting that together because sometimes I, I think I've forgotten all the work that the city uh here about these events are contributing already. So thank you for putting that together.
Um Mayor Verter, we're starting.
Sort of more of a comment, sort of question. I mean, you're not expecting action. You know, all of these are, it's great because I know when we started this process, we didn't know how many we would get. Um I think we've heard in the last year, you know, a number of these where we did make investments like the Y M C A where there was a lot of. But the organization was very appreciative, but the community loved having something here. Others are some more, more recurring events. And I acknowledge also, in the current economic climate, you know, getting sponsors is more challenging. I, I, I guess my only disappointment is not to sort of target Morgan specifically, but one is there is a lot of gifts and kind there. Um and, and even in the, in the concept of, you know, the, please let me rattle a little bit, but I don't want to be focused versus like we've added the numbers because we thought we would come in low, you know, just in terms of being transparent with your planning process. Um but I think the only thing that I would sort of feedback that I would have loved to see is, I think, investing more in that area where we want to bring, bring people there, great. But I think also like, how do we engage other elements of our community that maybe are, you know, s- um sound sensitive? Or is there something we could do visually? Is there something we could do tactilely to really expand access in the community? Or whether it's a marginalized community, whether it's, you know, accessing or opening up to, to sort of more um uh ableism or other things in the community. So again, just sort of feedback in terms of as we approach this in the future. That's one area that I would have liked to see a little more novel or thinking go into the approach, fully understanding that there is challenges. And the committee loves these events. So I, I don't think any of them are not going to be welcomed by the community. It's just, again, part of the process, just a little bit of feedback from.
Um Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, I think all these events are, are really great for the city of Duval. I wouldn't have any trouble.
Yes, I will agree with that. I'll create an agenda bill, read the vote for that meeting. Thank you. All right, uh with that, then we'll go ahead and move on to a public hearing on our transportation plan. Uh will be led by Director Thomas, Naomi Montes Dooca, and Larissa Grandepel. Um I'll go ahead and read uh the public hearing rules into the record. In adherence to the regulations outlined for public hearings before the Duval City Council, Chapter Nine of the City Council Procedures Manual, any individual seeking to address the council during designated public comment segment must comply with following procedures. First, sign in on the provided form specific to the public hearing, and second, thoroughly complete all pertinent sections of the said form. Upon commencement of the hearing, as announced by the chair, typically the mayor, the city clerk will present the chair with a sign-in sheet. Subsequently, the chair will proceed with the agenda for the public hearing. Each speaker will be summoned to the podium in the order listed on the sign-in form, where they must communicate their name and, if relevant, their address, affiliation with any organization or group being represented, and their corresponding role or position within said organization or group. Time limits for speaking engagements are three minutes for individuals representing themselves and five minutes for those representing a group or organization unless otherwise determined by majority of the council president. The city clerk will monitor and enforce these time limits, setting a timer for each speaker. Comments should be pertinent to the subject matter of the public hearing and respectfully addressed to the city council, with personal remarks being deemed inappropriate. Disorderly conduct, including disruptive behaviors such as booing or harassment, will not be tolerated and may result in removal from the premises. Speakers may alternatively submit written statements, which will be added to the official record by the city clerk. Questions posed during the hearing will not be answered immediately but may be addressed at the chair's discretion following the close of the comment period. Copies of city council and public hearing procedures will be available upon request and distributed to attendees at the outside of each public hearing session conducted by the Duval City Council. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh the first part of our presentation is from our senior planner, Naomi. This is the joint project between uh the planning department and Public Works. Uh we are in our second public hearing this evening, and we anticipate closing the hearing this evening. And then on the agenda, there is some, there's time for discussion on the transportation plan. And then our plan is to come back at the next meeting um to get the project approved, the transportation plan. Thank you, Naomi. You're on.
Thank you. Um just a little technical difficulty here, just working on sharing my screen.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm gonna try again. Um it still says it's been disabled. I promise I won't say anything vulgar.
We can hear you.
Okay, there you go.
Oh, there we go. We got it. Unless people consider the transportation plan vulgar, well then, I apologize. So tonight. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. The volume's just a little loud. It's not rocking. It can be turned down just a bit. Now. Naomi, can you say something?
Hello.
You're good to roll, Naomi.
Okay, great. So uh tonight I, we're going to start uh with this hearing with uh providing a brief overview of what the ingredients are of the transportation plan. Um no details. Uh assuming everybody, Rutherford Packet, and any members of the public that didn't speak are, that are going to watch later or watching now. Uh uh this is just uh showing how it's uh, what makes the transportation plan a transportation plan. So the agenda tonight is very simple. We're going to give you a summary of the timeline, uh the different parts of the transportation plan, the next steps, and then the final portion, which is the Q and A. So here is a summary of the timeline. So as the, this is also on the transportation plan web page. It's color-coded, so anything that's a meeting, that's kind of an outlier, is in a beige color. Uh anything that's in blue was a city council meeting in which we discussed and presented the transportation plan or something associated with it. Everything in dark forest green uh was a public outreach activity. Everything in uh burnt orange slash red was a planning commission meeting. So you can see uh it's a peppering of a little bit of everything. Uh oh, and one thing I forgot to mention is light green were the steering committee meetings. Those are the same steering committee meetings that we have for the cooperative plan. We also discuss the transportation plan in those meetings. Now we're going to talk about what makes up the transportation plan. What are the ingredients? So Chapter One is the Purpose, Intent, and Regulatory Setting. What that means is, why are we writing a transportation plan? What do we intend to accomplish by writing the transportation plan? And regulatory setting is just a fancy phrase for saying, here are all the rules that require us to do this and require us to do it in a certain way. Chapter Two is Goals and Policies. Uh this is concurrent with the goals and policies in the transportation element, which you will see in a few weeks. And those talk about uh what the broad goals are. So a goal in any element or in any plan is, this is what we want to do. Policies are, here is, all, this is how we want you to do it. And the regulations, what you will not see tonight, is specifically how it's done. So those are the goals and policies. And then Chapter Three um gives an overview of existing transportation services and facilities. And that's where you start seeing graphs and, and some math and calculations. Uh what do the roads look like right now? It talks about levels, level of standard, what our ratings are, what kind of traffic goes through Duval, including the traffic you see up on the screen. And then Chapter Four goes into forecast transportation conditions. So Chapter Three was, this is what we have. Chapter Four is, this is what we think is going to happen in the future based on our calculation models and um trends and that sort of thing. So that also involves a lot of calculation and math by our engineers over at Transpo and Public Works, including Larissa. And then Chapter Five goes over transportation systems plans. So we've talked about what we have, what we project to be happening in the future, and then how are we going to meet those needs? So Transportation Systems Plan, that chapter talks about things like uh different levels of, different types of transportation. So in the past, when you were to see a transportation plan, uh it talked about uh different modes of transportation. Now the state requires uh multimodal uh transportation. And so you'll see lots of acronyms in there, but what it's talking about is multimodal means, um how do you get from point A to B, including walking, biking, skateboarding, uh rollerblading, cycling, every possible way? And how do you naturally evolve a system through improvements and different things so that all those different modes of transportation uh can take place safely? Okay, I lost my cursor. Okay, there it is. Chapter Six then goes into, okay, so we talked about where we're at, what we see happening in the future, all the different ways we uh propose to meet those needs, including the ways in which we are required. And then Chapter Six talks about, well, how are we going to pay for it and how are we going to make it happen? So that's the transportation finance and implementation chapter. And then you go, come to the end. So that's a very quick summary of the transportation plan. The details are in the packet. Um the next steps include finalization, which are literally just some final touch-ups if we need to do any or if we have, receive any comments. And then after that is adoption. Um but one thing I forgot to put in there, and I apologize, uh just because our meeting schedule changed a little bit, is that we will be um taking this back to the planning commission and asking the planning commission for a recommendation to the council members for adoption. And then once we get a recommendation from them, we will be coming back to you and asking for adoption. And that brings my presentation to a close. Uh and I will uh stop there.
Thank you so much. Um clerk, what are, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We don't.
And no one in the audience. So with that, the public hearing is now closed. And now we're in the audience, so with that, the public hearing is now closed. And we'll move on to our first agenda of new business, Agenda Bill twenty-five dash zero eight, adoption of the transportation plan, so the discussion director Thomas.
Good evening again, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, now is our opportunity, if there are any recommendations on the transportation plan, and Larissa, myself, and Naomi um, or who can answer questions. If we can't answer something, we will come back to you at the next meeting.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just popped my eye again, is the map that shows the routes, the transit routes still shows that uh, Route six twenty-seven? And I Googled it up in store, maybe it's an old route. Snohomesh that's actually snow travel or something like that, I'm not sure, but it still shows it on this map. But it doesn't list it under the existing transit service, but it shows it in the map, so it's page seventeen of the actual document. I don't know if that's something, I know we brought it up last time, and I, Lanzuski can, I'm sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Stasis and Steve Lanzuski, I would likely defer to Larissa on this, and do you know the two-two-seven and three-two-seven were all the routes, so six is not an all, like, there's, kinda like, I think it's codes, there's codes on the number and routing, and I don't recall six anywhere.
Yeah, it's showned in the map, so, yeah.
It might, it might just be a typo on the, in the legend.
Is there another route that has the orange?
There, I know that there is an SBT route that used to operate, and I think um, Laura mentioned that they contacted us. Um, and are starting or resuming services.
Yeah, that one, and Dennis on here.
Okay, Councilmember Anethen, um, you've asked my question, uh, Larissa could be answering, so we'll go to the next council member that may have a question, please. Uh, Councilmember Owen.
First, does the, does the transportation plan already account for, in terms of level of service, the ADU discussion that we're having? I, I was trying to add that maybe units, but I
Yeah, that's a really good question, so, uh, when we look at our comp plan and the transportation plan is historically approved, we have to look at all of our growth, looking forward and and right, and regular homes, you're assuming about a two percent growth in eighty-four.
Okay, yes, okay, okay.
Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, I mean, I can't find it now, but there was a map of sidewalks. The, the latest sidewalk that was completed was on the is it not on the map?
No, it's not on the map, and the reason why, a lot of these were, we, we started the update of this plan in twenty-three and kind of concluded it in um, like, mid-twenty-eight-four, so a lot of this work has kind of been done and baking. Um, so, some changes that have happened over that time have not been incorporated into the document.
Really, I just was curious, it's wild.
Yeah, we, we just didn't capture it, this, this update single.
Councilmember Anethen.
Yeah, I assume we're gonna maybe adopt this tonight, um. No, no, not, so this is one of the final touches, so.
Yes, yeah.
Um, I can't remember if I brought this up before, but I, I keep seeing that it's showing eight-hundred-and-ninety housing units and that's how we're basing this entire plan. And we already pretty much baseline to twenty-fourty-four. So, often do we and are we going to account for what obviously needs to be done, and possibly actually still about any time?
Yes, no, it's, it's, that's a great question, so the eight-hundred-and-ninety housing unit number, that's our target, right? It's with by King County, so we worked with them to develop it, we talked about pipeline projects with them, and there's like a, a surplus you know, if you will, that will get us into twenty-fourty-four, it's just a target. Um, we also have uh, the capacity number, which is, you know, a little bit different. Um, but, please there, there's no real reason to update, what we do when we have um, development come in is we do transition impact to the analysis reports. And they, based on our model and based on other um, impact analysis, the turning, one of the turning movements and accounts that we have is an plan now, those are things that developments use in order to evaluate levels of service based on their development type. Um, and to make sure that they don't negatively impact that. If there are larger projects that happen, like annexations, um, and things like that, that will that nobody can be increased those model um, trips, then we require that the developer rerun them off. So, yeah, so is that something that's kind of built into our development review, we talked about? Um, this, this plan is just to show for GMA requirements and PSRC that we can manage that trip generation that was given to us as a target.
Yeah, so if we go over this number, like we've got an annexation, we're gonna begin to do a model created that would account for growth.
Correct, we would, we would run our model, given the baseline, given the counts um, and information I would get from the development, to ensure that the available levels of service don't align.
And once again, I wanna remind council members, you do not get to go more than once on your question, we have seven members of council that are part of this body, and we need to allow ample time for them to hear the questions and answers of each individual and allow staff to answer. So, Mayor Pretend Mercer and then Councilmember Owen, please.
Just a sort of a quick one, I know Councilmember Owen already asked sort of about ADUs, I, I did, this more just a point of clarification, um from Director Thomas, but if I recall, on the ADU, it also had an exception for funding improvements, is that correct? Uh, or?
Yeah, we can't, under the new statute, we wouldn't be able to require um, budget improvements.
So, it's primarily a neutral impact, it wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't be any worse than it is today, other than the additional traffic, but it it, there's not an opportunity to leverage that improvement to connect sidewalks or do other work, so I think you addressed my question, but thank you.
Councilmember Owen.
Right, this is more just kind of catching up to the vision question that I've got, but um, when I was looking through the plan uh, first street had the greatest percentage increase in traffic, uh, about a three percent increase, why are we expecting first street to get increasingly busy?
Um, so, it's, that's a great question, and I had some of those questions for our model too, and it's, it's not that it will get increasingly busy, it's that it needs to be brought to a standard in order to handle the traffic that currently
Oh, it's already below, it's in, I, you know, I didn't
It's, it's not that it's below a standard, it's that, um, so we have a standard cross-section for our lane widths and sidewalks and all those types of things, and it meets currently the standard, but with trip generating um, new development that were come, to come in, if we saw every trip that was accounted for in that model run, then we would need to do those impacts in order to support that.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Owen, let's wait until um, others have a question again, and then we can come back.
Uh, it was just, it was just to kind of reiterate my question, you could maybe have misunderstood, it, the idea is just that the reason first street will have more traffic is because of the development we're doing, which is gonna drive more traffic there.
Yeah, so that's just what, yeah, Director Lanzuski knew was changed, yeah, to burning wood.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this plan? Right, seeing that, we'll bring it back to the next meeting, and with that, we'll move on to Agenda Bill twenty-five dash seventeen. Review and approval of the human services grants for discussion under decision, uh, John Bautera.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council staff, uh, John Bautero, City Clerk. Um, the Human Services Grant Committee met on April third to discuss all the applications that we received for the Human Services Grant. And there were quite a lot of really good ones. Um, and um, the subcommittee then discussed the merit of each one of them. They also uh, graded them, and they proposed an award amount, which is um, Exhibit A. Uh, I will say that the total proposed awards is forty thousand, that's the amount that's budgeted for this year. The total requested was sixty thousand nine fifty, which um, for what I understand is the highest we've ever had, or might have ever had, so um, so that's, it's worth noting that we did get a lot of applications. And I will let the committee members speak if they want to add something else, but um we uh, we brought this on uh, for uh, discussion and approval.
Any members of the committee that would like to share anything before moving forward, Councilmember McHenry?
Um, yeah, just in general, in case other council members are curious, um, we had two that we didn't recommend funding at this time. Uh, one, a supportive community for all, seems like an amazing organization, I think they were just kind of coming into this um a little close to the deadline and, and didn't have a lot of specificity to what they were gonna spend money on, it's more abroad. These are types of things we do, um, so we decided not to move forward with funding that one at this time. And the other one, the Carepoint Clinic, amazing idea, it's much more, it's very much healthcare. Uh, which we haven't typically focused these grants on that, we've gone yeah, basic needs in terms of like food security, but also then more the mental health space of healthcare. Um, and also, that one in particular was asking for full funding to fully fund bringing the clinic through, and a part of this grant process is making sure that I think it's, we're no more than fifty percent of their funding, so um, for that reason, and for the numbers and how they played out, and always trying to balance, um do you try to give everyone a little bit of money, or do you make it worth it to each organization administratively on what it costs to then administer the funds, you know? Um, and I think, and then we had a cup, one regular that usually applies, didn't this time, so it was kind of an interesting, different mix. Um, and then the newer one, the YMCA, um, of Snohomesh was a really neat one, that actually also benefits Acres and Diamonds because that's gonna be a scholarship for their kids to attend our YMCA camp. Um, so it's just a win-win, because for them to do their other camps, uh, they have to get transportation, which is just cost prohibitive. So, we thought this was a win-win, um, and I think that's all I've had, I don't know if my other fellow committee members had anything.
Uh, Councilmember Supple. The other thing that we noticed with the supportive community, John we gave us all the information that we needed, so, um, them and also the other one, Carepoint.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, I think this is the first year in a couple of years, we can see the budget for the listen, it's up in here.
Thank you, um, any further questions, um, and if there are none, I would be happy to entertain a motion from council for approval.
Make a motion, uh I'd prefer the city, um, actually, I lost it here, motion is uh, I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-five seventeen, awarding the applicants of the human services grants, the funds described on Exhibit A.
Right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passed, it's, um, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Bill twenty-five dash eighteen, accessory dwelling unit calls and update for discussion with Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman, Dr. Yan, Lawrence from the record, um, I have a presentation, thank you. While we're bringing that up, hopefully, council members have an opportunity to take a look um, at the policy, where we put the comments in the right-hand section, which we talked about at the last meeting. So, this evening, not what we're gonna go through, because we're gonna start to head toward public hearing, and that slide, please. And so you saw the, in our um, city administrator report, I put him in here as well, just because we're gonna be using this this weekend as well. Um there is one other ADU that was just completed that looks really nice, but they're still finishing up their landscape. Um, but in general, I think the community has done a really good job with our existing ADUs. Some of these ADUs should still be allowed, maybe one of them might not be, potentially for height. Um, next slide. We'll just keep going since we saw this in the administrator report, okay, there we go. So, tonight, we're gonna read, you have member comments from the April first meeting, we're gonna have a discussion. And we'll take questions, and then what we're looking for is final consensus. We did go through this with planning commission at their last meeting, which was their first official reading as well. And they didn't have any additional questions or comments at this time, but I did let them know that we were coming with council, and then I would report uh, next slide. So, next steps, and we have completed our city, city attorney review, is what we've completed this week, uh, we've completed our social media posting. Um, this weekend at eleven AM to two PM, we'll have our ADU station at our comp plan open house. Uh, planning commission and council will hold their hearings in about a month, so on May fourteenth and the twentieth. And then we expect recommendation on the fourteenth and twenty-eighth, we do have to be through the process by the end of June, because that's when the statute becomes effective with or without our policy. Next slide. So, now we're gonna go through the items one by one, there aren't that many, so it shouldn't take us too long to do this. And so, the first one um, that came up with building, um, the building height. So, current zoning code allows for up to twenty-five feet, and we measure to the eve, and that is if you have a flat foundation, if you have a daylight and, or, or even worse of that, then you could get potentially thirty-five feet if it were three stories when you build a traditional building. Uh, we can stay with current policy and allow them to stay at that twenty-five feet. We can reduce the height for detached ADU to twenty-four feet, and either measure it to the eve or measure it to the roof. The one thing we looked at is we do have some ADUs that are above a detached garage. And um, if we measure to the roof, we might not be able to get those types of ADUs in the community anymore. Do we, let's go through one of them.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, you know, everybody except our newest council member, council member Owen, participated in the discussion very extensively at our last meeting, um, so in the interest of time, um I would like to kind of move through these relatively quickly if we can, um, so um, I would like to go around the room and maybe start over here and see keep track of whose preference for building height and go through these one by one to, to speed up the process, if that works for everyone. Councilmember Supple.
Let me see, uh, I mean, a little, why, why do the measuring to the eve applies to all the construction?
We had a council member that um, wanted to know what we could do for, if we could go by the twenty-four feet, and so I talked to our city attorney, and he said for the detached portion, if it's an ADU, we could go to the twenty-four feet, and we could measure it from the top of the roof. We don't currently do that, so now we're asking, do you wanna stay with what we have now? Which is the twenty-five feet? Do you wanna reduce the height to twenty-four feet, measure it to eve, which is what we, how we currently measure? Or do you want to reduce the height for detached ADU and measure it to twenty-four feet at the roof? You have three options.
I was, I was gonna go around this way, but
Just before, um, you said something about if, I just, could you revisit what you said just now about the ADUs over a garage? So, if we lower it from twenty-five to twenty-four, are you saying that that would? And I was, that that would eliminate some of those possibly, and then also if there is an ADU on top of a garage, does that measurement go from the ground? Or does it just go from where the ADU starts, which is at the garage?
It goes from the ground floor, so we take the four corners, average them, measure to the eve on whether it's a uphill or downhill, so for this purpose, let's just pretend we're in a flat world, so we would measure to the eve.
That's right, I would prefer this, and I know City Ball's kind of inconsistent with how it's measured, I'd prefer we go to a more consistent measurement, because you can obviously Because you can obviously. So the roof, you know, it's inconsistent in terms of how high the overall building would be. I prefer to get to a place where we're consistently measuring off of twenty-four. That would be from the the bottom of the buildings to the peak of the roof. Not being like the actual roof.
Or let me clarify. So just for ADUs, we're not changing how we do all other buildings right now.
The only, okay, now I have a clarifying question. I had thought you said last time when we met that they they had to be in alignment.
They do if they're attached. So if a if a home is attached, has an attached ADU, it has to go by what the code is. Whatever that is, it's twenty-five feet. If it's detached, you can do it to twenty-four feet.
I still think my answer is the same. I mean, I'd love to do it for everything, but that's more work.
Okay, option two. Who would like to go next? Wait, I.
Well, now option three was mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh can I? Go ahead. Well, option three, prevent ADUs over a garage.
And I do wanna just clarify that as part of this, we are not prepared to change how we measure. All of our other homes. We were, we talked about this at the last meeting, that we would look at that with the design guideline. So this would be a fit for now until we went back and did the design guidelines. So we would only be doing this for the ADU.
Sorry, I know I'm violating the sort of two question rules, but it it. The, how are other jurisdictions? Because you said most jurisdictions do measure to the roof. They don't measure to the eve. And so. Does that mean most jurisdictions outside of evolve wouldn't allow an ADU over a garage? I mean, I guess if it sounds contradictory. When the legislature passed this rule that they would. Put in language that prohibits.
So the statute doesn't say how to measure it. So then you have to decide how you're measuring it. Most cities that I could find use an average roof height. But we don't have that right now.
So then maybe I'll refine my answer. I have my long-term answer that I'd like, but for the interest of going forward, I guess it would be um. Option two, which is. I mean, I don't, I haven't heard a particular recommendation from Daff either to to sort of set up this conversation, so.
Yeah, I think. Well, just in general, staff is looking for direction based off of the last.
Oh, I I know.
Council meeting, so.
At the end, if you want our recommendation, I can give it to you, but I think that should happen once. You guys.
I'm just not sure we understand, or I understand all of the votes, even one person.
I have a question about like what we're voting on, because.
There's no vote. We're seeking consensus for Director Thomas to go back and modify the policy. Based on council feedback from the last meeting at this meeting.
We're hosting feedback from the community and then and as I said at my last meeting, I really need to. Really want to hear what the community have to say. I'm not ready to be like, this is what I want. The community might come back with different feedback, but I I I hope that this is kind of a temperature check. And if we come back and say, uh. Do you see what I'm saying? Because I feel like we're kind of committing to something right here and.
To be clear, consensus is not voting. Consensus is giving our staff a direction of. Where the city council wants to go with a particular policy. City council can always reserves the right to amend policy up until final passage. Of the bill and of the ordinance. That has always been and always will be. But our staff is needing some assistance and guidance, and if this is also at the request of council. If council does not wanna have this discussion tonight, we can move it to the next meeting. If you would like to wait until after the community meeting that was long ago scheduled, we can do that as well.
I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that we are seeking feedback, so it would be really.
And that's been been discussed multiple times this evening. Uh councilmember Supple.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to come out deeper through staff. That's what your recommendation might be.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember McHenry.
I was just wondering if is. Is this something easier to update all at once, or in the future would we do that individually as well? So like for now, if the easiest thing is to just stay at the current policy and then when we're ready. Or in the future, would it be updating each individually anyways? So it doesn't really matter. Would it be easier that way, I guess?
Uh, city administrator, ma'am.
Um so Director Thomas and the community development team have. Probably five years of work that they need to complete by the end of twenty twenty-six. We are not in a position to come back to council on. Minor decisions or even things that feel major but are individual components of this, like. Uh Director Thomas has to do her work, tie the bow and move on. Because we have five years of work waiting for us. It has to be next two years.
And I'll I'll add on that. So we are bringing forward the road line this year. Now, along with design, that will have to lead to our. Staff's recommendation, we go to what other cities do, which is do a rich building height. And twenty-four to twenty-five feet is the out there regionally. So that's the approach that we're gonna take. If there are any more consensus or thoughts, then I would, if you want me to give.
I'm ready to know if you need my feedback. I just don't.
I'm sorry?
I'm I'm ready to give my preference at this moment. I just wanted to clarify that. It's public feedback is different. You are not held to this decision tonight.
No, you're not, because you're not speaking about. Naomi?
Hi, everybody. I I just wanted to help out here in this discussion really quick. Um. It might be worth it to go back and check the housing action plan, because we did extensive public engagement. With the pu- housing action plan and um we are, as an adopted document. Um supposed to follow the recommendations in that housing action plan. And so what you'd want to do, because this is regulation. Is um this is a good opportunity to just take a look at that, then look at the policies and and the goals, the strategies in that document. And see if they align, because if it does align, then you have your answer. Because ADUs were discussed extensively in that document as well. So just know that that's a tool.
Thank you, Naomi.
And this is where I was confused based on what we were asking. What I want is what you actually stated, which is to cross the line with surrounding communities. And whatever that standard is, if it's easiest then now to stand current policy and then adopt it later, that's what I want. It's the end state that I'm looking for. So I think that's where I'm looking to get is that we might go off the roof consistently with what surrounding jurisdictions do. And apply that to both ADUs and the primary residents. So however approached we get there, that's sort of my.
Thank you, Mayor President. And then um I'm seeing some head nods, so I will ask this group to hopefully simplify this further. Is there anyone to adjust to that? Two, three. Do you act or?
I'm, I don't object. I just, if if we. You already have an existing building, like a detached garage, and you can. Six feet. Could be the result.
Um councilmember Naclin and.
Um I think what's tricky is that how I feel about this depends on circumstance. And since we're just choosing out one size fits all. I've seen where if you put the plates to the eve at twenty-four feet, when you put a super high peak roof. Have an ADU that towers over house and towers over the house next to it. And it, I've seen it. It is not good. It doesn't say how peak the roof could be. I mean, you could go really high with that peak roof. It would block the light, so. Your tone to me is unfair.
No, councilmember Naclin. Councilmember Naclin. I need you to stick to the questions at hand and quit providing personal opinions and make assumption, making assumptions. About other individuals in the community's opinions about what's going on. If you would like to have this conversation another time. Then the council can do that, but we we've asked some questions and you continue to go off topic. And I'm trying to keep this council on track with a very challenging conversation.
Excuse me, I believe I was.
You were not.
Let's have a vote. Was I on topic?
You're out of order, councilmember Naclin. If you cannot follow directions and follow the rules, I will have to ask you to leave. That is in the wrong. You were not. I am. Stop.
Stop what?
Okay, recess. You're taking a recess.
How am I not on topic?
Councilmember Naclin. You're continuing to put assumptions of folks. You are, you are putting, you are putting opinions of community members that you don't have here. This is out of control. It needs to stop. You continue to not follow the rules this evening. I have been very polite about it. And very firm. It needs to stop.
I would like to know if everyone else thought I was off topic when I was contemplating my feedback.
We're not in session right now, are we?
No, we're not.
If no one's objected to the rules, then you need to follow the body.
I haven't heard a ruling from the body.
The chair makes the ruling, councilmember Naclin. You are out of order. And you continue to argue with me at a public meeting, which is a violation of council procedure.
What I'm asking for, can we have council? And I believe council is supposed to weigh in. I would lack to ask our attorney when I am. Feeling that the ruling of the chair, that I was off topic. It's not. What I feel is valid, what is my next process? I believe that the council makes that decision. I could be wrong.
At at this point, the appropriate thing to do would be for somebody to raise a point of order if somebody wishes to do so.
I did raise a point of order. Doesn't it need to be someone else?
No, once a point of order is raised, then the presiding officer makes a ruling, and then that ruling can be appealed to the to the body.
I did roll. I I feel that I was attempting to appeal it, and I used, didn't use the proper words, but that was clearly my intent. And I believe I have the right to appeal it, and that's what I was trying to do and ask the body.
I mean, I I I guess I take issue on this one because I can't see it being germane. The question specifically was around how E-Pipe could influence the overall height of the building. Which is then relevant to the to the point of of order. I think beyond that, you know, that that scope that way, that was was germane. To the question of making up. Or option amongst the three that were presented.
Yeah, I will re- go ahead, um city administrator, because that was not their.
Can we even be talking in for recess still, or do we need to call it back in session first?
I I'm sorry, I I haven't heard everything that has transpired, but if we're in recess, we should go back into session so that the council can consider the point of order.
I am going to demand that the council member not interrupt anymore, or else I will have you removed from the meeting per our council procedures, period. I'm done. This is a constant, and enough is enough. Uh go ahead, city administrator.
So it's the time of the evening where we would need to motion to extend the movement. I would like to make a suggestion, because this is a topic that obviously generates a lot of emotion, feelings. So we have one other topic that's on the agenda that um is actually fairly pressing. So my suggestion would be that we bring back the ADU. No?
We're having a meeting right now, right?
No, we are.
I, the other two items, I think, are easier. If we wanna come back and talk about height, then we can. But we're close to needing to start prepping for a hearing.
Great, go ahead.
Move back in session.
Let's do it, and I will make the announcement.
We're back.
All right, thank you. All right, after a brief recess, um as mayor, I'm making the recommendation that the discussion of building height be postponed. Um until the next meeting, I'll move through the next couple of items. Continue through our agenda. In addition, we are past our nine fifteen time, so if someone would like to make a motion to extend, please do so.
Make a motion to extend the meeting.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, um Director Thomas, if you could go on to uh explaining the parking, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. So right now, our existing policy requires one purpose. Under the new legislation, you can require no parking. You can require up to one stall for a lot that is less than six thousand square feet. And you can require up to two stalls if the lot is over six thousand square feet. When we did the research, many cities are are either not requiring. Park install, or they're requiring one, no matter what the size of the lot is. So if you're asking staff for a recommendation, I would keep it at one, which is where this is.
Right, um does anyone have any objections to the staff recommendation? Good. I think we have consensus. Thank you, Director Thomas.
Thank you. Uh next slide. We did talk about um single-story incentive, and we don't have to go into detail tonight, just enough to give me a little bit of. Movement, because this is one of the areas that we're gonna have dialogue with the community on. So we provided, you know, a toolbox. And what we heard from council is like, well, maybe we don't even have all of them. We will pick a number, and staff would recommend maybe allowing two. And then they can pick. But if there is something on this list that is not liked, then we should take them. Off the list. You don't have to do that tonight, but I think if we move towards, you can do two. Then that gives a little bit of flexibility.
For me, this worked in conjunction with the other provision of if we limit it to twenty-four feet. To the top of the roof. I don't know that I feel like it is necessary to have the single-story incentive, because it can all. Then two stories. Either to the eve, extremely tall, once you add a roof. And so in that case, I would potentially be more interested. So they definitely interplay, and I I think that it. I just wanted to say that, that these things all interplay.
City administrator, ma'am.
Uh Director Thomas, how do we move this forward? So can you come to the next meeting with a marked up thing? And let council vote or not vote, so that we can move this forward, because we are under a statutory deadline.
Yeah, I think the first to the parking one and the building height are easy. Um this one, I think if they want to go in an approach where you get to pick two of those. Then I can easily draft that language and bring it back. And if they wanna take something off the off the list, we can do that live time. Or if they wanna add something, we can do that as well.
And that's my, that's my purpose on this one, just sorry, is not having um. A laundry list, but actually sort of a pick-two. And, and I think when we start to think about those and that, that two, I think that will highlight, like, maybe the things we don't want on the list at all. So we talked at that, I was thinking that what you were going to come back with was a little different from this, but I think if you start from that point, that would give me the clarity. Uh, to, to winnow that list down to, to a workable final product.
Is there anything on there that you're like, that somebody is like, no?
Uh, Councilmember McHenry.
I'd really prefer to not have the significant trade.
You're wrong. Great. Okay. Are there any objections to that? Seeing none, is there, are there any other items on this list that you cannot go with? Councilmember Naclin.
I don't feel comfortable with, uh, reducing that to five feet, especially in a neighborhood that has fifteen feet setback. So I'd actually like to remove it completely.
Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, the impervious service, service allowance may be increased if approved by this, I will, I might just see that on there, because us leaving it up to the city engineer to just make the decision.
Okay. So on the significant trade, we've had one request to complete, or I'm sorry, the, um. That back, we've had that request, um, did not hear from the rest of council, so it cannot be removed. Is there consensus, or does council disagree with that at this time? And keeping in mind that Director Thomas is gonna bring back a couple of options.
Uh, this significant trade, I thought there was consensus.
There's consensus on that one, I.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Setbacks. Councilmember McHenry.
Setbacks, I, I would, I'm not quite there, but I, I'd like to talk about it more. So for me, I, I just want it to still be on the list and to talk about it.
Yeah, right.
And I like the, the other approaches, the variants of that, personally.
Um, is there anyone else that, um, that agrees with taking that off the list? Not seeing any, so then we can move down to, um, the, uh, Councilmember Supple on impervious surface. Does anyone have any feedback or objections to what Council, Councilmember Supple has requested? Councilmember McHenry.
Just want to say I agree, I'd like that one off as well.
We have five in agreement.
Okay.
Okay, that's perfect consensus. All right, um, now moving on to park and traffic impact fees that can be waived upon request. We have that.
Yeah.
And then ADU may be up to twelve hundred and forty. Okay, and ADU shall not contain a long-term basement.
Why?
Well, Director Thomas.
Hi, so then you start getting more square footage in there, and then you start to see the roof set of, you know, on a larger pitch.
Okay, okay.
So I'm not hearing any, um, dissension on that, so that will remain on the list as well. And then Director Thomas will come back with some options for the council.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, and then we'll move on to our final agenda bill tonight, twenty-five dash nineteen, the waiver for parks, and this is the walk-on item that is time-sensitive for Commissioner, or Department Decision Director Lenishewski.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, council staff, and the citizens listening, the Lenishewski coworkers. Sorry to walk this on, but I thought, you know, if not now, never, so. We, we pay fees for building permit issuance on all city projects, just like a citizen does. My consternation, so to speak, on this topic is when we build a park, two examples currently, and this is nothing against anything to start code. So we would need a waiver from you folks to go against the code in this fee. So the Duval Depot, the gazebo, we're rebuilding, that has approximately a four hundred and fifty dollar permit fee. And we are using, uh, pretty term wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, strategic funds for, so on top of building the gazebo, that's that section, we also will pay the permit fee. It seems to me like it's just money in the left pocket going to the right. Same thing goes with the roof coverage, going from a dead park, hundred and four thousand dollar contract, we're gonna have a, almost two thousand dollars. So for park-specific, not talking about utilities or anything else, the conversation we had today was, you know, smaller projects that the funding in usability can be used more to build things rather than process things, was my goal forward. Uh, a no is fine, a yes is fine, I just thought you folks might want to know how we're spending those funds when, you know, uh, in the, and again, start the late game. There's a couple of examples of like, when we replace pieces of equipment, like six thousand dollars barely gets us money to replace a physical piece of equipment in any park that we have. Uh, they go up the more things they do, whether they're dynamic and spin or, or move and teeter totter, the price just goes up and up. So I would, I put this out there in hopes that we can spend more of our money on products for kids in our parks, rather than process these to get things in our parks for kids. That's my, uh, shtick in, in summary. So our ask is, as it's written, um, waiving permit fees, building fees for these types of projects that need permits. That are under a hundred fifty thousand dollars, really kind of small, I'm not gonna say, oh, let's waive a fee for eight million dollar park, like, we're not gonna do that. And the fact that if we aren't using any consultants, that we wouldn't have to pay, um, the fee. But if we do use consultants where Laura's got some specialty that has to be looked at, that, that fee is obviously paid for by the applicant, which is the parks department. Uh, I know it's a little weird since we all wear so many hats between utilities, parks, general on buildings, facilities, all, all the like. But parks in, in, you know, my mind, it's just one of those things, like, I hate to spend two grand or more on a permit when I can eventually replace more equipment or buy more things for kids, the platelets, so. That's why I brought it for him, um. I'm, I'm.
Oh, go ahead, City Administrator.
And I think the important point is not that we are not getting a permit. It's whether one hand is paying the other hand for the fee. It's not trying to avoid the code requirements around compliance and safety and all that. It's just, it's taking from the general fund paid for, the general fund, and it's, it's money that's going into. Paywork?
Yeah.
Um, not that we're not complying with the.
And, and the work's still, like, we'll get down, we'll part of the permit. Our side applies, the permit fee side, whether it's building planning reviews, uh, it's just the, that kind of, trying not to pay for the process when we're all there doing it anyway. And after talking to, even with, um, Dream Director Thomas, one note she thought that it didn't include, because it's park-related, but I don't want to have squeezy things pushed against her, because she followed the rules that are put in front of her. But I think to her point, like, including the parks sign program that is also, was on consent tonight, like, that's gonna need a fee, that's gonna need a permit. And then it's, it's kind of the same thing, so if I ask for any change to what was written, I would ask to insert, including park signage at a certain point in the note, if there aren't any other questions, and you folks support it, if you don't support it, then we can just let that go.
Great, uh, Councilmember McHenry, and then Naclin.
Well, I was gonna move to approve the agenda bill twenty-five dash eighteen, whereas the city council waves building and planning permit fees levied by Duval Municipal Code, where the city consolidated fee schedules for park development, park signage, I'm making a little edit there. And improvement-related activities on projects valued up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars in construction costs, and only pay fees if consultants are participating on the city's review team.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, there is no further business, and so less than objections, we are adjourned. We will, that, I, yeah, thank you.